May I welcome members and the viewing public to this meeting of the City Council. Before commencing the formal items of business on the agenda, the newly-elected councillor for the Woodhouse Ward, who is attending his first meeting of the full council since his election on the 28th of November, is to be introduced to the council meeting. Welcome to the council councillor Marshall.
Well, there are councillors in the viewing public. The people of Woodhouse were spoken and voted for real change. It would be my absolute pleasure to introduce to this chamber the first ever Liberal Democrat councillor for Woodhouse Ward, councillor Willis Marshall.
Welcome and housekeeping announcements. Please can I ask the monitoring officer, who I think is going to be James Henderson at the moment, is that right? To introduce the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Please can I have your attention whilst I make a few housekeeping announcements? Please can I request that members of the public familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants, who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. No, I think we're working again. So, the meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend the permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. Finally, please may I request for safety reasons that no recording equipment or any other object is held over the balcony from the public gallery? Thank you.
Thank you James. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30pm. But I shall adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Before we start the formal business, I now propose to hold a minute's silence in memory of two former councillors who have passed away recently. These are Jim Bamford, whose funeral service was held on Monday. Jim served on the council from 1995 to 1999. And Graham Oxley, who served on the council from 1999 to 2010, representing the East Echelsfield Ward. He was also Lord Mayor of Sheffield from 2009 to 2010. I shall provide an opportunity at the end of the meeting for members to pay tribute to those former councillors. Please now join me in a minute's silence in memory of Jim and Graham. Item number two, apologies for absence. I have received apologies for absence from councillors Denise Fox, Marouf Rahouf, Gary Weatherall, Cliff Woodcraft, Anne Woolhouse, Will Sappwell, Sahira Nas, Nigat Basharat, Nabila Mawala, John Wright, Mark Jones and apparently councillor Fox who's running late, is that correct? Is there any more?
Councillor Nicky Bellfield has had to go home, she's very poor there.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Mike Drabber will be late for the meeting.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Item number three, exclusion of the press or public. There are no items of business on the agenda for the meeting where resolutions may be moved to exclude the press or public. Item number four, declarations of interest. This item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Councillor Johnson.
Thank you Lord Mayor. For item nine... Nine, yes, nine, I should declare I'm the council-appointed director to the River Stewardship Company.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Item number five is public petitions, questions and statements and other communications. I am going to take liberty here for Lord Mayor's communication. As it is our last full council before Christmas, we normally have a collection for the Arch Project. We understand now that people don't often carry cash. So, being as efficient as ever, there's a Just Giving page set up straight away where members can donate. And I'm also going to take on liberty, these two prints are part of my mayoral fundraiser for the Arch Project and Roundabout. They are available online from the Roundabout website and the Arch Project and printed by us and from the Cathedral of Shobit for £15. Perfect Christmas present and perfect women of steel. So, thank you. Anyway, I will now move on. So, public questions and statements. This council enables and encourages those that live and work in Sheffield to have a say in the work of the council by allowing public questions, statements and petitions to be presented at these formal decision-making meetings. Our approach is to make decision-making accessible to the public by enabling them to submit questions and make statements at the council meeting and to participate in person or remotely or asked to have their questions or statements read out on their behalf either by a nominated person or a council officer. For this meeting, we have received the following communication from members of the public. No ordinary petitions, but there is one petition which will be debated at the end of this item of business. And this is to be referred to on the agenda for the meeting. No questions on matters relating to items of business on the agenda. Two supplementary questions resulting from three initial questions on matters relating to the remit of full council. No public statements. The initial questions received on matters relating to the remit of full council will not be asked at today's meeting. This is because the questions together with responses from the leader of the council or the relevant committee chairs have been published on the council's website and circulated to all members of the council. However, the supplementary questions that have been received can be asked and will be responded to at this meeting. Please note that there is a period of 60 minutes in total for ordinary petitions and public questions and statements. I shall now invite two members of the public to ask their supplementary questions. May I ask that participants keep to the content that has been submitted in writing in advance of the meeting? May I also ask that members keep their responses short and succinct? This is to ensure that as much time as possible is available for other items of business on the agenda for today's meeting. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Could I ask Peter Garbutt to ask his supplementary? Is Mr Garbutt here or is...? I'm going to refer this to an officer who will actually read out Peter's question. Thank you. I was chief exec.
Thanks Lord Mayor. The question from Peter Garbutt. I believe it's extremely important to inform the Sheffield public about the implications of climate change. How else can they prepare individually and in their communities? My question is therefore, how does the council propose to bring this information to all the people of Sheffield? And this is a question for councillor Ben Miskell.
Thank you Lord Mayor and Chief Executive. I was going to thank Mr Garbutt for his question but unfortunately he's not here today. And also say that it would be good to, it's good to see him back in the town hall. However, I think for those people who are here today who might not be familiar with our public questions scheme, it's probably important to provide some context. My original written response to his question is available on the council's website and the answer that I'll give just now is best considered alongside that response and it's to be seen as an ongoing conversation. So, we're aware of the research that you've referenced which highlights the potential risks to the Gulf Stream system of warm water currents. Obviously it's advised that whilst there is evidence of this risk and that this remains a recognised degree of uncertainty in the scientific community about how quickly such change might occur or how reversible that will be. As I mentioned in my original response to you, this makes it difficult for the council or indeed any other subject matter expert to predict with any specific certainty the implications to the UK cities like Sheffield beyond the scenarios that you've mentioned. That said, in light of the uncertainty, we continue to work with partners, including the Met Office, to deepen our understanding of those potential impacts that climate change is having on Sheffield. Your supplementary question asks how we can raise awareness of those critical issues in Sheffield and amongst Sheffield residents. And whilst working within the constraints of our budgetary pressures, we're actively finding ways to inform and engage as many people as possible, supporting understanding and action on the climate emergency. It's important to emphasise that whilst the council provides leadership and plays a very significant role, addressing the challenges of climate change requires a collective citywide effort. In addition to the resources available on the council's website, such as the Climate Emergency Response page and our bi-monthly newsletter, we communicate regularly through platforms like Chef News. Engaging the next generation is of course vital to this work and I was going to say to Mr Garbutt that I know that he will agree as I have had the privilege of teaching his children for some years, many years back. For example Sheffield Children's University has partnered with Sheffield Hallam University to create a climate in the box project, which will be delivered up to 600 pupils this year and potentially be used in future years. And of course we thank them and will continue to work with them. Now, across the council, various teams are working on projects that aim to provide information and research to young people and schools with the goal of educating children and through them their families and wider communities. Similar projects have been developed to different community groups. We do take the approach that it's very important with our communications engagement to bring forward information that's informed by behavioural science and brings as many people on this journey with us. So, it's very important that we do address these issues. Of course we are and thank you very much for your question.
Thank you councillor Miskell. It's Mr Sahira Hussain. Would you like to ask your supplementary question? Do you want to come to the microphone? Thank you. Could somebody just check the microphone please?
Check. Microphone check.
Have we sorted this?
Shall we invite him into the chamber?
Do you want to come down into the chamber please? Yeah. Council, we'll just have to be patient, technology is challenging.
Okay, so if I just hold it in front of you? Just there, that'd be fine.
Slank everybody. Finally, yeah, we're getting somewhere. Okay, first of all, I'd like to start by saying thank you to Curtis for, Curtis woman, for the services that have helped in Shire Green in facilitating the flooding issue we have. So, it's an ongoing process. A matter has been resolved. Now, that's part of our problem. Now, my question is in two parts. First part is the existing graves. As I originally sent a question asking for drainage to be installed, well, I was quite clear in my question. The drainage we're asking to be installed is on the side of the existing chambers. It does not interfere with the existing chambers but it will alleviate and take away the flooding within them graves. This drainage system will act as a twofold approach or threefold. A to drain the vaults. B to act as a French drain. And C, more importantly, it will create a walkway, a suitable walkway where people can visit their loved ones without having to worry about how dirty their shoes are going to get without wearing carrier bags all over their shoes. So, this will actually take away three problems with one solution. So, my question to yourselves are is, will this cabinet fund this retrofit? That's the first part of my question. Second part of my question, which is equally as important, knowing the fact that the new chambers are costing £850 fitted below ground with the drainage and we are as a community, just for that part of the service, are being charged £2,850. There's an excess of £2,000 being charged. Is the council going to look to reduce this charge with immediate effect? As I've been advised, that this will be re-looked at in April when the whole revision will take place. For the family members who are currently facing financial difficulties have to pay this extra amount today to look to reclaim it back in five months' time is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Mr Hussain. And I thank you for being so patient. I'm going to ask councillor Curtis Crossland, Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, to respond. Councillor Crossland.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Thank you for your question after the microphone started cooperating. So, we are committed to designing a drainage solution for the full burial plot as quickly as possible and we will share our plans as soon as we are able to. Following the competitive tender process, we did enter a contract with Gen Precast Limited, which you're aware of. I think I started it beginning of October. Since their appointment, we have worked promptly with them to agree the solutions for the newly-installed graves, which you know of. And I am also really grateful to them because due to the situation at Shire Green, they have prioritised Sheffield, so they've been working with us because they know as well as we do how important it is that we do find a solution as quickly as possible. So, our next step is to finalise the surface water drainage system for the full area. And we will be, we are in conversations with the contractors on site to utilise their skills and experience there as well. We can't really commit to the outcome of those conversations yet because as a local authority, we have our own sort of procurement rules and things to follow. But as soon as we have got something in place, we will let you know about that. We're also in liaison with the Environment Agency to make, to ensure that the plans that we are putting together fit with the new cemetery regulations because there's just been some new regulations that have been brought in as well. So, along with those plans and timescales for the implementations, we will let you know at the forum meeting that we'll have. So, whilst I understand that every day without a solution has been difficult for everybody involved, we are very grateful for the patience because I do think that we need to get this right first time so we don't end up causing stress, even more stress further down the road if we rush into things. So, I think we have made progress, probably slower than everybody would have liked but we are walking in the right direction. So, again, I thank you for the questions. We'll be back with some more information. Oh, I almost forgot as well, with regards to the second part of your question. I was only sent that this morning, so I've not been able to. But we'll get back to you within a few days with that, if that's okay. Yeah, we are walking in the right direction and I am grateful for the question and for all the work that you've been doing on this as well. So, thank you again.
Thank you. This concludes item 5A on the agenda. We now move on to item 5B, petition requiring debate. The council's petition scheme requires that a petition containing over 5,000 signatures from individuals who live, work or study in Sheffield be the subject of a debate at the council meeting. 25 minutes are allowed for each such debate. A joint paper and electronic petition has been received containing over 7,300 signatures, submitted on behalf of the South Yorkshire Muslim Burial Trust regarding the shortage of burial space in Sheffield. The petition asks for immediate action to tackle the dire situation that exists with regard to the depleting burial space provision in Sheffield by the delivery of available, affordable and appropriate new burial space slash provision in Sheffield for all communities and particularly for the Muslim community within the next 24 months. Further details of the petition is set out in the council summons. A period of 25 minutes is allowed for petitions regarding debate. May I call on Mr Abid Hussain to present the petition on behalf of the petitioners? You have up to three minutes to do this. Thank you, Mr Hussain.
Honourable Lord Mayor, distinguished councillors and officers, respected members of the public, good afternoon. I do ask you to indulge me, I had a great fall over the snow period. I'm in difficulty breathing, never mind talking but this is a very passionate subject and I feel it was only right that I be here to present this. It's a privilege to come to this chamber, which serves as a place for debate, decision-making in the best interests of the people of Sheffield. Today is my third appearance in this town hall within a period of 15 months to seek urgent action from the council to adequately plan for and to provide sufficient burial space for the city's needs. While some people may choose cremation, others choose burial. Some of our communities do not have a choice as it's a religious imperative and an obligation to bury communities such as the Jewish community and the Muslim community. Since the beginning of mankind, resting the deceased in a dignified manner has been the responsibility of the living. So, this is not an issue for any one community or any one faith. It is rather a question of paying the final respects to our loved ones who have not only built this great city through the decades of hard work but also afforded Sheffield its own unique blend of tolerance, respect and a diverse heritage of which we can all be proud. It is therefore not surprising that these 7,000 people that signed this petition within five days and an emergency public meeting in which over 300 people attended shows you the passion and commitment in which they view this issue. Today, I speak on behalf of those that has given us a mandate and are quite worried that there is less than three years burial provision left for the communities of Sheffield, which is exasperated for the Muslim community. Tinsley Park is already full and not open to further Muslim burials. Abbey Lane has ongoing problems with ground drainage and so is not suitable. Added to this distress, as we heard earlier, is the issue of climate change. We're getting increasing rainfall, which is having a detrimental effect on graveyards and water seeping into the graves. Let's not forget, two to three years isn't a long time. We've been at this with the former chair councillor, Richard Williams, who I'd like to thank for the meetings we attended for 15 months. That's why now we feel that there's a glass ceiling that committee can't deal with and we brought this to the attention of the leader. On behalf of the community, I'd like to ask that we start to prepare for this. What may seem easy can take a considerable amount of time if not given the urgency and priority it deserves. Identifying land, undertaking various environmental assessments, checking ground conditions, getting the necessary planning permission, designing the best layout, installing drainage pathways and vehicle access is not something that's going to get done overnight. But we need to take this on head-on, prioritise it. On behalf of the community, I'd like to thank the leader of the council, Tom Hunt, the opposition leader, Mohammed Shafak and all the other councillors that attended our emergency meeting at such short notice and tried to allay the concerns of the community. The council leader did commit and said that we were reviewing over 60 sites, 45 of those that were supplied to the council over a year ago by the South Yorkshire Muslim Burial Trust. Given that the petition is addressed to councillor Hunt, I'm requesting this matter is led directly by the leader of the council and the chief executive with what we hope is cross-party consensus and support. To that end, the South Yorkshire Muslim Burial Trust would like to hold regular meetings with the leader and the chief executive until the new burial provision is delivered and business-focused meetings should be underpinned by a project initiation document, PID, and a detailed plan working towards efficient and timely objectives. Previously, these basic project delivery documents have been requested by our organisation and the Communities Parks and Leisure and the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, but no such documents were forthcoming. As a former chief executive officer of a large regeneration agency in London, I know that governance and oversight plays an important role in local government delivery. I therefore kindly request the Strategy and Resources Committee to oversee the provision of the new burial space for local residents, including the Muslim community, and in doing so, give due consideration to the appropriate policy and development management measures that need to be incorporated within the Sheffield local plan, the financial implications of the above as part of the budget setting process for 25, 26 and beyond, putting in place practical measures to improve drainage, public footpaths, both at Shire Green and City Road cemeteries. I commend the council to consider these points that have been raised as paramount importance to the whole of the communities and in particular the Muslim community. I'd like to end, Lord Mayor, by something I wrote last night, knowing that I was going to come to this chamber. The clock is ticking, every second goes by.
I am going to have to ask you to write...
Okay, thank you. I ask Sheffield City Council to be prepared for when I die. What if I die, what will you say? Oh, we're sorry, Abid, we do not have any burial space for you today? Let us not kick this can further down the road or into the long grass, for all of us in this august chamber will surely one day pass. Councillors and officers, your decisions and actions here will have a lasting impact on our future generations and what they hold dear. Let them look back and say, truly, you were the leaders of today. Let not political difference and resources get in the way. Take the bull by the horns and make this burial issue go away.
I've been extremely lenient, but thank you. I'm now going to refer, may I call... I'm so sorry. May I call on councillor Curtis Crossland, who is Chair of the Communities Park and Leisure Policy Committee, to respond. You have up to five minutes to respond, councillor Crossland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the heartfelt concerns raised in the petition and the thousands and thousands of people who have signed the petition. And I think it's because the loss of a loved one is one of the most difficult and stressful situations that anyone can go through, and so this petition has really struck a chord with people. But I do want to ensure you that alongside the rest of the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee, we are fully behind the urgent search for new land. Every person deserves the dignity of being laid to rest in a way that honours their beliefs and their wishes. As I'm sure you're aware, you mentioned it in your speech as well, this problem isn't a new problem. We've known about this for probably over 10 years. The clock has been ticking for a long time. Across the city, we now have an estimated six to eight years of burial provision left, but for the Muslim community, this is about three to four and a half years at the moment, and that is why we do need to act now. So earlier this year, we approved a development of a comprehensive burial cremation and cemetery green spaces strategy, which will set a clear path for ensuring long-term burial provision. But all the way through that process, every member of the task and finish group made it clear that we couldn't wait for the completion of that strategy, we had to find new land now. So I also want to make it clear that the Burial Services as a team have been working so hard on this, working in Burial Services, they know why this matters and why it's important to people. And as councillors, more land is something we've all pushed for. It's been something I've pushed for as Chair, it's been something the previous Chair's pushed for, it's something the current deputy Chair has pushed for, it's something the previous deputy Chair has pushed for. This does span parties because it isn't a political issue, it's about doing what's right for the city. So in a moment, the Lord Mayor is going to ask other spokespeople to make a statement, and then we're going to open it up for a debate, and then we will propose a course of action. But I do sincerely hope this petition clears the blockage that has been holding the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee and Burial Services back, because it's a massive issue for the city, and we just need to find more land now. So thank you again.
Thank you, councillor Crossland. May I call on councillor Tom Hunt, the leader of the council, to speak on this matter on behalf of the Labour Group? You have up to two minutes to do this. Councillor Hunt.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Abid, for coming today and presenting the petition on behalf of thousands of people who have signed over the last few days and weeks, and thank you for organising the public meeting and extending the invitation to myself and colleagues last week. It was a real honour to meet with you and have the chance to talk about the work that we're doing to address the concerns that are so clearly laid out in the petition. You're right about the importance of this matter. It's why we are acting, as the leader of the, Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee has just outlined, and we are doing so in a cross-party way. And I particularly like to say thank you to the work of the cross-party Task and Finish Burial Group that councillor Kayoum and others were part of, did a huge amount of work over the summer on this issue. As you say, this is a matter that impacts on people of all communities, of all faiths and none. As councillor Crossland has just outlined, there are between six and eight years of burial land available across the entire city, but between three and four and a half years' worth of space for Muslim burial sites, so that we know, we hear the clock that you're talking about ticking, and we know that we need to act to address this issue. Let me be really clear that we will not let space for Muslim burials to be exhausted whilst there remains space in other cemeteries, and we will act quickly, and those 60 sites that you mentioned are being looked at, and there are meetings taking place coming up soon about that. Look, as we have an aging population, many of us will have longer to plan for our deaths, many families will have longer to plan for our deaths, but in those final years and months, none of us want to be worried about the final place of resting. That final place of resting should be a place of solace, of private emotion, and of making sure that it's one that is stress-free. We hear you, and I'd like to extend that invitation to meet with you soon so that we can continue this conversation.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. I am being strict because we only have until 10:00, and I have so many speakers. May I call on councillor Malaki Haby to speak on behalf of the Green Group of the council? You have up to two minutes to do so.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I completely support this petition. Gathering thousands and thousands of signatures within just seven days is a clear and urgent call from our communities. I genuinely believe this isn't more than just a statistical or a delay within our whole plan. However, I truly believe that the current capacity that we don't have is not just a logical issue, it's about ensuring that we uphold the dignity, respect and faith-based practices. The reason I'm stuttering is because I didn't write this to start off with. I believe that, yes, this is a full council, and we do refer this to the CPL committee, and that's where decisions are made, I agree. However, I do believe that today we should create a pre-agreement as a whole council that would serve as a form of recognition of the council's intent to address this issue swiftly and proactively, and in the finer details can be taken care of in the CPL committee. For example, that this council notes and formally acknowledges the critical need for additional Muslim burial spaces and commits to addressing the issue as a priority. I also believe that within four weeks, the relevant committee or executive officer will produce an initial feasibility assessment. This would explore viable locations, funding options and estimated delivery timelines for new burial spaces. I also believe that this council should establish a working group for specifically establishing and gathering representatives from the Muslim community and other stakeholders to ensure that the specific needs of the community are central to any proposed solutions. This council should also note and commit, and then refer to CPL, that we will be allocating staff, time and resources to fast-track the development of a project plan, ensuring delivery within 24 months or sooner if feasible, and this whole full council also notes and should be forwarded to the CPL that we should investigate temporary solutions such as extending current burial spaces or securing agreements with nearby local authorities to meet immediate needs while the long-term plan is developed. This should be a pre-agreement framework that we refer to the CPL to prove that we do agree with everything the petition says and to say that we are intending and we are...
Thank you very much. Thank you. We now move on to the general debate. As I said, I have a number of speakers. The first one on my list is councillor Mohammed Maru. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Baris Khabib Hussain, for the wonderful speech that you made earlier. It resonated with quite a number of people. When thousands and thousands of people actually sign the petition, I had a speech, but I'm not reading it, when thousands and thousands of people sign a petition within a few days of it actually being launched, it sends a clear message out to us as elected members, people that we are actually elected by to deliver on a service that they believe that they should be entitled to. So I predicate what I'm going to say on the back of that. The eyes of the public, the 10,000 people almost who have signed this petition or are signing this petition, and 300 people that actually turned up into a room with two days' notice, which the leader was at, the opposition leader was at, and some of my colleagues in this room were at, is a testimony to the fact that people feel extremely strongly about it. And it's not just the normal people who follow this sort of process and know what's happening in the council, these were people who've never, ever, people who've spoken to me, have ever got involved in any sort of lobbying to the local authority, but they feel really, really strongly about this, Lord Mayor. And there are people who are scared, worried that the space is running out for them, their families and other people that need to be buried as well. It's not just a burial situation, this is a Burial Services strategy that we need to build upon. Unfortunately, and I might be out of tune here, but the Burial Services service has been considered a little bit like a Cinderella service within the city council, and each of the chairs, the previous one and the chair now, and the chairs previous to this. I know we have priorities, but we have a sincere priority here that we need to deliver upon. So what I'm saying is, I fully support this petition. We from this chamber send out a clear message that there will be priority given to this, and I'm making a suggestion here that finding land, and I will help in this, Lord Mayor, that we use our compulsory purchase powers to identify land and deliver on it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
May I call on councillor Abdul Kayoum? You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, can I first of all thank Abid Hussain and the Burial Trust for once again not only highlighting this issue and bringing it to our attention, but also this issue of immense importance, but also highlighting the urgent need to address it. Lord Mayor, having worked with a number of members and officers with Burial Services over a number of years, I am fully aware of the huge amount of work that has gone into improving the provision of Burial Services and a great deal of commitment and willingness to meet the specific growing needs of the Muslim community, which now numbers well over 50,000 in Sheffield. That's not to undermine the work that's already gone on and is going on in improving this service. Lord Mayor, having said that, the immediate issue now, as we've heard again and again, is the fast depletion of available burial space in Sheffield. If we were to give the number of available spaces today, that number would be out of date by next week, because spaces are being depleted almost on a daily basis. It is this which has given rise to very legitimate, serious concerns, as expressed by the community and articulated by the Burial Trust via a heavily attended public meeting and the petition presented today. Lord Mayor, the fact of the matter is that as a city, we find ourselves in a situation and we need to work together to address it. Lord Mayor, I dare say we have cross-party agreement that the issue needs addressing immediately, and indeed, as Abid Hussain has quite succinctly provided a way forward, I suggest that we make note of that, as we have unwavering commitment from members and senior officers alike. What we need is a robust action plan with clear timescales, a multidisciplinary team leading the work to allow better cooperation and collaboration between various services involved and regular monitoring to ensure that it remains on track. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have now councillor Alad Al, sorry.
So thank you, Lord Mayor. I just, I want to be straight to the point. The fact that this petition received 7,000 signatures in such a short time shows how important this issue is for the Muslim community in particular, who cannot cremate their dead. All eyes are on the council, all eyes are on the council, and its words will not be remembered, its actions will be remembered. So let's set timescales, let's make a plan and get into action. Thank you.
Councillor Williams, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to the petitioners, nice to see you again. But in a difficult situation, I think it's a terrible shame that you've had to put this petition through again. I thought this was done 15 months ago, clearly it isn't, but there are some differences. Over the last two years, Burial Services have done an exceptional amount of work in conjunction with local community groups to get this ball rolling, and it is rolling, and there is a plan, but we're at the point now where we just have to do it. It's a time for the council to support Burial Services, it's a time for officers and senior members to support Burial Services and just get this done. It can be done, now is the time. I said 15 months ago, and the phrase came up again earlier, this can cannot be kept being kicked down the road. We have run out of time, the nuclear clock is ticking, we're going to end up in trouble, it will be an embarrassment for this city and the council. If it can't bury, it's dead. So my sentiment on this, just do it, just get it done, and I fully support your petition. Thank you.
Councillor Alad, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Hussain, for attending today's full council meeting and presenting this important petition. First of all, I'd like to offer you the best of greetings and members of the community, assalamualaikum wrakatu barakatuh. I'd like to also thank everyone who has signed the petition. The numbers of signatures on this petition truly shows how strongly the community feels about this issue and highlights just how important it is to find a solution. I fully recognise that clock is ticking to make proper provisions for burials in Sheffield, not just only for Muslim community, but for all our diverse communities in Sheffield. As a Muslim, I fully understand and share the concerns of the community. We believe that life is temporary, Lord Mayor, the death is eternal, so the resting place of our loved ones is very important to us. In the past, I have raised this issue with the head of Burial Services on behalf of residents in my ward, Netherwady in Sharrow. I was assured that efforts are being made to search for more land, and I understand that this task is not an easy task. While the community has every right to feel anxious, it is vital that we continue to work together as a community and in partnership with the council. In doing so, I feel I'm hopeful that we will find a resolution very soon. Thank you very much.
I have time for one final speaker, the last on my list as well, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to Abid Hussain and Mahmoud, the Chair, for actually bringing this petition, and as other colleagues have said in this chamber, it's phenomenal that you can get 7,000 signatures within days, and as I understand, there's 10,000 signatures now, potentially many more to come. And I think the message is very clear that action is needed now. When Abid Hussain came 15 months ago, he was warning this council that there's a problem coming over the horizon, you need to take action, and he's here now saying it's absolutely emergency. I'm not doubting the will and the commitment of Burial Services, but we have to look at what's been achieved, and actually, I think what's now needed is actually, it's not just a Burial Services issue, it's also a planning issue, and it's a property services issue. Without getting those people, senior people in the room together, I don't think we're going to get this forward. We're at a really important time for the city. We've had our local plan out for inspection... We've had our local plan out for inspection. In the next year or so, it's going to be adopted. We've got to have within that local plan, not only where we're going to build our houses, where we're going to build our industrial units, also where we're going to give our dead the dignity that they deserve. And it means for most of us, you know, let's be clear, death will come to all of us. How we choose, you know, to be either buried or cremated, like Abid said, some of us, it's going to be dictated by your faith. I can tell you from a personal family situation, my father's buried abroad, my grandfather's buried abroad, mine too isn't. But my uncle, youngest one, is at Shire Green. My mum's made it clear, she doesn't want to be taken to Pakistan, she will want to be buried here because this is what's been her home, that's her last wishes. You know, I pray for her long life and I, but ultimately I know what will happen ultimately, death will come to us all. And I want people like my mother to be able to have her final wishes granted. So that's why I think we've got to take this at a more senior level, you know, the likes of myself and Tom Hunt or others, not only have to attend meetings, but now have to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. May I offer Mr Hussain a right to reply to respond to any matters raised in the debate? You have up to three minutes to do so.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to make it clear that whilst South Yorkshire Muslim Bereavement Trust is representing the Muslim community, I think sometimes things get lost in translation. We're very much here to represent all the other faith communities that also have burial as a religious obligation, that includes the Jewish community and parts of the Christian community. It's not just about the Muslim community. We as Sheffield residents have got an obligation to provide this facility for every faith community that requires it. So just because we're here talking about the Muslim community because of the dire situation, it does not mean that we are not looking out for the rest of the communities in Sheffield. And sometimes, you're quite right, 15 months ago, I said to you that we, along with a number of MAST, the Council of MAST, have made representations during the consultation period of the local plan. That's where priorities lie and I want to see this issue addressed within the local plan and then a budget identified to deal with the issue. It's a bit like me, I'm 150 kilo, give me 50 kilo to carry, I'll carry it. But why burden councillor Curtis with a job that he can't conclude? It requires the leader of the council, the chief executive, the Strategy and Resources Committee to bring it to that committee, cross-fertilised, cross-departmental, not silos, with the level of authority to make it happen, otherwise it's just not going to happen. 15 months ago, we tried that with councillor Williams. We weren't taken seriously enough. We had no recourse but to take this to the public and the public outcry is here in front of you by this petition. I don't want to be here, this is my council, I want to work with you, not against you. I don't want to be in national newspapers where people are crying out and the tabloids are making headlines. You are representatives of the community, the resource you're given and the task you're given is responsible. And God forbid, if there's not more of a serious issue than this, then what is it? Dignity in dying. I want to take the opportunity to thank the leader for extending this invitation to meet on a regular basis. I look forward to receiving some diary dates to try and meet you before Christmas, to plan out a concrete set of key milestones, outputs and objectives to agree a succession strategy and a forward strategy for this very dire issue. And I'd like to thank all my colleagues, it's good for me to stand here, who give up their voluntary time, effort and energy. They come back after a hard day's work, people like Mahmoud and others that you don't see here from the community to address issues like this, to bring it to your attention and to make it happen. I've just been given this, yes. A gentleman, 108 years old, Ghulam Mohammed, who fought for this country in two world wars, passed away last week. Imagine he passed away and there was no grave for him to be buried in. A person that fought in world war, he's got more medals than I've had hot dinners. So please, let's prioritise this, let's work collectively, let's develop a model of best practice that we can roll out nationally for all the other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for your response. May I call on councillor Curtis Crossland to respond for up to two minutes and then propose a course of action to be taken in response to the petition? May I remind members that the courses of action available to the council, based on the nature of the petition, are either to note the petition and take no further action for the reasons put forward in the debate, or refer the matter to either a committee or a strategic director for consideration, having regard to the comments made by members during the course of the debate. Councillor Crossland.
Thank you Lord Mayor, thank you for everybody who took part in that debate. I think it's clear from that debate that we do urgently need to make progress on this. Because if communities, parks and leisure want more land, if officers in the service want more land, but the council still isn't producing more land, then something's definitely broken here. Because 15 months ago, as you say, we did ask for more land. As a city, it's about doing what's right and we do need to find more land to lay our loved ones to rest. So I think the problem here is with a department that's out of the remit of communities, parks and leisure. They're tied up with a local plan, as you say, and neither of those issues sit within communities, parks and leisure. So I'm proposing that we refer this matter to Strategy and Resources, the committee that's responsible for cross-cutting issues such as this. Because we do need a multidisciplinary team on this. Because the hold-up hasn't been with officers reporting to communities, parks and leisure and I do feel that reporting it back to CPL will not get the issue even considered before February. And this is an urgent issue and we need it debated and heard a lot earlier than that. So I don't want to kick it into the long grass anymore, this is urgent. So Lord Mayor, I am proposing that we refer this petition to Strategy and Resources.
Thank you. Is that motion formally seconded, councillor Shafak Mohammed? Does any member wish to propose an alternative course of action? I'll take that silence as no, okay. I'm now going to move to the vote on the motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless, and we do have unanimous support for the motion. So do we have unanimous support for this motion? Yes. I just want to be clear because it's a public petition. That's fine, thank you. The motion is carried. Item number six, members' questions. There is a maximum time limit of 30 minutes for the whole item of business. Item 6.1 is questions on urgent business, there are no questions on urgent business. Item 6.2 is supplementary questions. Written answers to questions submitted by members in advance of the meeting have been emailed to all members, circulated at the meeting and published on the council's website. Those questions were to the leader of the council or any policy committee, subcommittee, regulatory committee, chairs or to members appointed by the council to serve on the South Yorkshire Joint Authorities and the South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority or any other external body or joint committee. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who have submitted questions to ask one supplementary question for each question asked. Page one. Councillor Diamond.
Thank you Lord Mayor. So I just want to be crystal clear and please answer yes or no to this question. Despite the ICC issuing arrest warrants for the Prime Minister of Israel and despite the fact that the UN has found that Israel's methods of warfare in Gaza are consistent with genocide, you will not ask the Labour government to end its participation in Israel's crimes?
Councillor Hunt.
The position is set out there, we've raised our voice on this issue and a copy of the motion was sent to the government last year.
Page one, you have one second.
That was a different government, as you know. I'd just like to ask Labour members here to reflect on that last answer. Regarding the Palestinian flag, will the council now commit to raising it annually on the International Day of Solidarity with the Palestinian people until such a time as the genocide has been ended and Israel's apartheid system dismantled?
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you and thank you to those members of the public who requested that the flag be raised and thank you for those people who participated in the process that led to the flag being flown on Friday 29th of November last week. The flag protocol was very clear and the decision was very clear that this was a decision that was taken to fly it last week on Friday the 29th and not on an annual basis, but the flag protocol was very clear about how requests are made to the city council.
Thank you. Councillor Alad Al.
The flag was flown on the 29th of November. Did you endorse the Palestinian flag flying? Did you endorse the flag to fly when it flew on the 29th of November this year?
I asked for the flag to be, the request to be considered by the chief executive in line with the flag flying protocol and when the decision was put to all leaders, we fed in our views and the council collectively flew the flag on Friday 29th of November and I know that it was warmly received by lots of people in the city.
Thank you, thank you councillor Hunt. Page two. I'm sorry, but your name's not down on the list, I'm on page two. Where, sorry? Yeah, exactly. Can you just give me a chance? I'm on page two, I was just looking at Sophie, please just give me a chance to do my job. Thank you. Councillor, councillor Ares, thank you.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I'm grateful for councillor Hunt's response to my question and his response says that accommodation review programme is at full completion is expected December 2031. My question then is, in the light of my previous questions regarding, your response to my previous question regarding the depot review and how it relates to the Norton Nursery site on Graves Park, which I don't think I need to explain further. Can I have councillor Hunt's assurance that this timetable will not impede the work that has gone on at the charity subcommittee regarding the restoration of the arboretum, page three of the arboretum that was reported to the last charity's subcommittee?
Thank you councillor Hunt.
Thank you councillor Ares, I think it's a slightly different matter from the one you've asked about, but as you know, the charity trustee's subcommittee has been looking at the issue you're referring to now. I suggest we have a separate conversation about it and provide you with the information that you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Page four, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you for your answer councillor Hunt around the funding of policing services. In your final, in your answer, the final section talks about adequate resourcing to fulfil the plan. Can you tell me whether the 65 million black hole will actually help with the financing of the resource for that plan or will it hinder it?
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Well, I think what we all welcome across the chamber, I'm sure, is the government's focus on tackling antisocial behaviour and I look forward to the working with everyone across this chamber on Monday next week. As people will know, the Public Space Protection Order comes to Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee as a way we're taking forward action in this city. The answer is stated that the police will ensure that any resourcing plans enable the police to use the powers that they're given and as those powers come forward, the police will be best placed to judge on that. But we will be working very closely with the Police and Crime Panel and I'm sure that members will get a chance to raise their voices there and in dialogue with the Mayor of South Yorkshire.
Thank you. Councillor Horner, you've indicated.
Thank you Lord Mayor, I've got three questions, one on this page and two on the next page. On the first question, on the bus improvement grant, it's hardly an improvement, is it councillor Hunt, if it doesn't restore the savage cuts of 2023? And it's well enough to say, oh, it was private bus operators. Well, if you'd listened to councillor Sanger years ago, they'd be franchised bus services, not private ones. You were able last year to blame the previous government, this government has not given adequate funding to restore last year's cuts. Is that not the case?
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you very much councillor Horner. Today marks the halfway point in the consultation that is taking place right now in South Yorkshire about bringing our buses back under public control. And I'm sure that councillor Sanger and the Lib Dem group have sent in their responses to say that they're fully in support of the Mayor of South Yorkshire's plan, working with all of us to bring our buses back under public control. It hasn't been happening in the past, we're taking action to make it happen here. So I look forward to working with you to bring our buses back under public control so that the people of Sheffield and South Yorkshire have the buses that they deserve.
Thank you. Page five, councillor Horner.
Thank you Lord Mayor. The question of the former site of Baiton Station, the station yard, Simca is saying it does not have any plans to purchase this site. The clue's in the word station, word station yard, it is the former station yard. If we're going to have a tram train service, which I still cannot get any answer from anybody about what the proposed timetable is, I know that West Yorkshire is going out of public consultation next year, Transport and Works Order in '26, start of works probably '27, '28. I cannot get any detail at all about this proposed tram train service which affects people in the South East. Service is not just to Baiton but to Woodhouse, Woodhouse spoke last week, I hope you will listen. We want this service, but you know, if you just provide a tram stop and you don't provide anywhere for anybody to park, it's not going to take us very far forward, is it? This land has been used for 50 years for car dismantling, it's therefore contaminated, scrap cars.
Thank you. These are supposed to be questions, not statements and speeches because you're taking time up from everybody else that wants to ask them.
So I say again, why can we not purchase this land? Is this going to go ahead or not?
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you and I appreciate the conversation we had about this bit of land last week. I'm very happy to have a conversation with you further about this.
Thank you. Question three, can we keep it a question please?
Thank you Lord Mayor. A very simple question, are you going to raise tram fares as well as the bus fares? Labour said they wouldn't tax working people. 50% rise in bus fares, is there going to be a similar rise in the tram fare?
Councillor Hunt.
There's a paper going to the MCA next week.
Page five, councillor Masters.
Thank you Lord Mayor and thank you for your answer because it's taken a long time to actually get this information. So as it seems that you're a very good conduit, can I now send you information that I've been, problems I've been having with two other bus stops and shelters, which I cannot get an answer for from the mayoral authority? Thank you.
Councillor Hunt.
Yes.
Page six. Page seven. Page, oh, we did pause rather a long time. I shall allow you to go back.
Bit slow now. At least it's the top half of page six, not the bottom half. Right, so councillor Williams, the point about the Charity Commission guidance here on conflict of interest is that the Charity Commission has identified that scenario that we've been weak as a council, they have published new guidance, and so I'm reassured by your answer here, it's good to get the officers checking out the legal advice through the monitoring officer there, but I just wanted to ask if the, if you will ask the officers to take account of the formal guidance that's published by the Charity Commission, so we can try and regularise the approach to charities and the inherent conflict of interest that we have in this council.
councillor Williams.
Thank you, Douglas. I thought I'd got away with it for a second there. Disappointed with you, Lord Mayor, for letting you flee. Never mind. I know, I know. Yes, you're absolutely right. It is, there is an inherent conflict of interest, and that's why we always refer back to the guidelines of the Charity Commission. And if in doubt, the officers are instructed to contact the Charity Commission about any matter needed. We need the guidance, and we are looking at it. Some things are going to have to change to make the system look better. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams, I'm sorry to disappoint. Page seven. Page eight. councillor Crossland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Miskel for your explanation of how sill works. I do note, however, that you've missed out how it works in our parish and town councils, perhaps the outskirts of the city have slipped your priority list. I would, however, like to refer back to my original question, and would you please be able to provide a breakdown of how much local and strategic sill has been administered per ward, please?
councillor Miskel.
Of course, Lord Mayor. I'd refer councillor Crossland to page eight and the answer that I've given him already, which does say that I will provide him with information following this meeting if he so wishes.
page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. Page 13. councillor Homshaw.
Yes. So, thank you for the answer. However, I am surprised and concerned by the answer. What is being said here is that members of the public and interested parties, including councillors on the planning and higher weeds committee, are not allowed to see relevant information by the statutory consultees provided in the city's planning applications as they are in other cities. Some of these are internal council agencies, which is addressed in the answer, but not all of them. That's surely wrong. It's far better that people see for themselves what's being said about a specific planning application and make their own minds up. So, do you agree that so long as personal data is removed, this will give greater transparency to the planning process?
Thank you councillor Homshaw. For anybody who's watching, is that question one or two? Question three? Thank you. No, it's okay, don't worry. councillor Miskel.
Lord Mayor, more than happy to have a further conversation with councillor Homshaw on this matter or any others. I took advice from our professional officers when answering this particular question, and I think much of it focuses on internal consultees, but I'd be more than happy to pick it up further with him.
Thank you. page 14. Page 15. Page 16. councillor Barker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Miskel for his detailed and helpful response on the city centre movement and access strategy. It was really interesting to see how well-planned public spaces can really increase footfall and as a result significantly increase trading. Though that shouldn't be a surprise, because some of us in here will be old enough to remember when the peace gardens out there was a no-go area, somewhere you avoided when you came into town, and to see that transformed into the well-used public space it is now is brilliant. The concern I've got regarding this councillor Miskel on behalf of the constituents in Richmond, and I'm sure many people share it, is that we don't exclude people from the city centre as a result of this. And in particular, I'm thinking, but not exclusively, of people with mobility problems or wheelchair losers. So I'm just seeking your assurance that making the city centre inclusive for everyone does remain the key focus of this work, so I can go back and reassure my constituents. Thank you councillor Miskel.
Thank you councillor Miskel.
Lord Mayor, thank you very much councillor Barker for his excellent question and also the advocacy that he does on behalf of his residents in Richmond. I think it's important to say, isn't it, that the Sheffield transport vision that my committee has approved has prioritised inclusive access across the city but also in the city centre. And I think it's really interesting that he mentions the issue about 20 years ago, where actually this council took that brave decision at the time to pedestrianise, to make those fundamental changes to the peace gardens, which we do know resulted in a 35% increase in footfall in the city centre, which is really, really positive. We do remain absolutely committed to making sure that residents across the city can access the city centre, and particularly those with mobility issues. And by that, we want to make sure that there is a net increase in disabled parking places in the city centre, and that parking spaces are prioritised for those with the greatest need. It's also important to talk about the new free Sheffield Connects bus, which allows people free access around the city centre as well. And of course, is really, really very good for ensuring that the city centre is open for everyone, is in the accessible for all, so he's got my commitment there.
Thank you. page 17 councillor Milson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Miskel for your very informed response, which explains really well how Vision Zero is, from what I can see, about taking a holistic approach to road safety. Issues of parking are across the city, widely known, but speaking on behalf of people in my ward of Crooks and Crosspool, I think people will want confidence in any process that might change parking habits, for example, rules around pavement and verge parking. So are you able to guarantee that the council will work really closely with people to ensure a fair process in any proposed changes that will result in effective co-produced outcomes?
councillor Miskel.
Lord Mayor, thank you for councillor Milson for her question and of course the work that she does in Crooks and Crosspool. I think it's probably important here to mention that cross committee working group that's been established between my committee, Transport, Regen and Climate, and Wasting Streets, to look at this very issue, which I think is really important. And she mentions her ward there, doesn't she, Crooks? We know those tight streets can be a particular problem for, flashpoint for residents in terms of problem parking, but also issues about parking on grass verges. You know, I'm really pleased that we now have a government that is looking to address these issues and look at them and not simply kick them down the can like we've seen over the last 14 years. But she does mention, doesn't she, the needs to ensure that we work with communities when developing solutions to tackle issues such as problem parking. And of course, that's what I hope this council will be committed to doing, and she certainly has my assurance.
Thank you. page 18 councillor Whitaker.
I'm very pleased to see all the work being done to promote road safety in Sheffield. But will you work with me to address the issue of speeding in my ward, which has been raised by residents in Utterbridge, Wandcliffside, Deep Car and Stocksbridge, as well as in some of the surrounding villages? Thank you.
councillor Miskel.
Lord Mayor, thank you very much to councillor Whitaker. I know from being out with councillor Whitaker and councillor Vidler in Utterbridge and Wandcliffside and Deep Car and Stocksbridge, that speeding is a particular issue there, and one that actually I know that he and councillor Vidler are very keen to tackle. Also, he's right to talk about the issue of Vision Zero, which is our commitment as an organisation to eliminate all fatalities and serious injuries on Sheffield's roads. I'm pleased to see that we'll soon be rolling out more 20 mile an hour zones in his ward and right across the city. I'm also pleased because he's been a big advocate of 20 mile an hour limits outside schools to protect some of the most vulnerable. They actually recently put in place a new 20 mile an hour limit outside Wandcliff side primary school. I'm happy to work with him and councillor Vidler on speeding and to tackle it in his ward.
Thank you. page 19 councillor McLean.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for your answer councillor Miskel. It is really good to hear that a focus for funding, for the government recently announced a £1 billion boost for bus services, a focus of that funding is to protect routes ahead of franchising. And in Walkley, residents frequently tell me our bus services aren't good enough. What will the next steps be in the franchising process, and how can people in Walkley Ward have their say? Thank you.
councillor Miskel.
Lord Mayor, and thank you very much to councillor McLean. I think the leader alluded to many of these points earlier on, and it's important to reiterate, isn't it, that actually we're now at that halfway point, aren't we, in the consultation period when it comes to bus franchising? And I'd encourage councillor McLean to encourage other residents in Walkley to take part in that consultation, which we know will be concluding early in the coming year. And also, we know that a decision will be made at MCA board on the 18th of March on it. There's many different events that are happening throughout our city. There's one at the Sheffield Interchange on the 6th of December, one at Medall Interchange on the 9th of December, and one at Crystal Peaks Library on the 11th of December. So I think we all have a responsibility to encourage residents of this city to take part in that consultation and to make the point that our bus services need to change and improve, and franchising is the best way forward.
Thank you. page 20 councillor Dragic.
Thank you for the update on the archaeological work at the castle site. Residents in my ward are excited about the new public park that will be created in the city centre. Could you outline what we can expect to see happening on the site over the course of this year?
councillor Miskel.
Thank you very, very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much councillor Dragic for the question. I think it's really important, isn't it, to talk about the work that is happening to regenerate the city centre? And one of those wonderful things is actually about what's happening at the castle site, the birthplace of this city. We know that lots of exciting work is going to be happening over the next few months, including deculverting the river towards Castle Gate. We know that the remains of the castle's upper chamber are also going to undergo a number of remedial works. Lots of exciting work is going to be occurring in order to be able to lay the ground for that park to be put in place, so that people can enjoy the fabulous public places that are happening and taking place in Sheffield city centre.
page 21. Page 22. councillor Dwyer.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Ben, for your response. I know residents are supportive of measures like anti-idling, particularly around schools.
What did he say?
That wasn't called for. councillor Dwyer. You know what, there's a pantomime across the road. We don't need one in here.
So tempted to say yes, we do. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be brief. When will council's education material for schools and fleet operators be available, please?
Lord Mayor, thank you very much to councillor Dwyer's question, which was originally about anti-idling and the air quality campaign that is happening across the city. I can confirm that in the new year, in January 2025, the council's going to update and launch those materials in schools, which we know are really important, and I know that he's looking forward to in order to work with schools in Burley as well.
page 25. Page 26, 27, 28 councillor Turpin.
Yay! Okay, looking forward to the answers that you'll send me for the questions that were difficult to answer. On question four, I think it would be prudent to have this sort of information, given that the council is responsible for gritting. So is it possible to get some data on accidents from slips on native pavements, please?
councillor Otten.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, so on the questions that weren't answered, I understand that the issue is getting data from Viola takes, Viola's not quite as interested in our timetables and councils as we are, so I think that's the reason to hold up there. I'm not sure I agree on the issue of us extracting data on that for the reason that you give, given that pavements, gritting of pavements is not, is not, well, let me care for how I put this. The gritting operation grits roads, it then, if it's done all the roads, it will grit certain pavements in the city centre and in the perimeter of hospitals. And if it's done that and it's still got time and resource, they will go out to, they will get a list actually of people with operations that you can't miss from the health service, and make sure that those people can access the transport network in order to get to their appointments. So that's the priority order, and I think that's right. And if, you know, if the NHS was to say to us, well, you know, it was 10 people this week and 11 people last week, I'm not sure we would change that on the basis of that information. So I think before we, you know, get carried away, I think we need to be a little bit more clear about what we're trying to achieve and what the priorities are for the gritting of the past that we have, because I think they do a pretty good job, actually. Thank you.
Any more, any more on your questions councillor Turpin? Yeah, that's okay. page 28. Page 29. Page 30. councillor Johnson.
It's actually question two, so we've gone to page 31. This was talking about the work's been done in Ecclesfield Park to both improve the, I'm talking behind a bit, there we are, but to improve both the park and the flooding risk there that of course causes problems in Ecclesfield. The issue is about, according to your answer about Sport England not allowing such areas to be used for nature-based solutions, natural flood management and alleviating those flood risks. So I just wanted to ask, what is Sport England's role in this, and how much are they putting into this park? Because I don't think they're providing any funding at all.
councillor Crossland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your question. I'll have to get back to you on exactly what Sport England are putting in. I think there is an issue here with balancing lots of different stakeholders to make sure that we do get the right outcome that we want. Perhaps a meeting with yourself and the local councillors is how we can dig into this. Thank you.
page 31 councillor Weatherall's not here, does anybody from the group wish to ask a supplementary? That's fine, thank you. page 33. Page 34 councillor Diamond. Yes? 34? No. This is, the clock's ticking, I'm about to cut you off.
Thank you, thank you very much. So this question was for you, Martin. I'm just wondering, based on these questions, you mean, these answers, you said, I asked, does this council support the manufacture of weapons such as shells? You've answered that the company will actually be building lightweight towed howitzer manufacturing capability, but you haven't answered the question on whether the council supports the manufacture of weapons such as these in Sheffield. You've put that BAE Systems chose Sheffield as it's the best location. Is that because the council loves making weapons to be used in conflicts around the world?
councillor Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the question. Just to clarify, it's the question two? Okay. First of all, if you're asking me, well, I can't answer for the whole council, you're asking me as the Chair of Economic Development, Skills and Culture Committee, but if I just look at the economic issues, why do companies like that choose to come to Sheffield? It's all about expertise in metallurgy and steelmaking, it's about the amazing advanced manufacturing capability. It's about the amazing advanced manufacturing capabilities that we've got, excellent supply chain links, skilled workforce, and it's a great place to live. So in terms of supporting those issues, I fully support them. I hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes this item of business. I'm going to suggest that we take our comfort break now. So we will be expected back here at quarter 2.4. Thank you. 2005 Statement of Principles Gambling Policy 2025. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. This item of business is to approve a statement of principles under the Gambling Act 2005. A draft statement of principles 2025 is attached to the report of the Executive Director of Neighbourhood Services, which was published with the agenda for this meeting. That statement was approved for referral to full council by the Wasteland Street Scene Policy Committee at its meeting held on the 8th of November. The motion to approve the statement of principles is to be moved by councillor Joe Otten, the Chair of Wasteland Street Scene Policy Committee, and seconded by councillor Minesh Parak, the Deputy Chair of that committee. The motion is to note that a licensing authority shall before each successive period of three years both prepare a statement of the principles that they propose to apply in exercising their function under the Gambling Act 2005 during that period and publish that statement, and b, approve the statement, the draft statement of principles policy under the Gambling Act 2005, recommended by the Wasteland Street Scene Policy Committee, Part 3.2.1 of the Constitution, as set out in the report. Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to thank in moving this, the officers, the work the officers have put into developing this policy, developing this new draft, particularly draw attention to the items on page 25 under local area profiles. This is a new piece of work that where we have mapped some of the issues that relate to risk and vulnerability to gambling as they differ across different parts of the city, and this will be taken into account in licence applications and licence, people applying for licences will need to show that they are cognizant of the particular risks where they wish to open up. So this is a, it's a great initiative, it's been extensively consulted on, it's been considered at Wasteland Street Scene, and I recommend it to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Otten. Councillor Parak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd really just echo Joe's comments. A fantastic piece of work from our officers. We've had a great discussion, I'm happy to formally move it.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson, you've indicated.
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. I wanted to say a few words. I'll just say congratulations first of all to councillor Will Marshall for being elected. And I was just thinking about the fact that where there's one winner in Woodhouse, there's also quite a lot of losers, and there's a positive reflection there on gambling. So support this policy for the reasons that councillor Otten and Parak have mentioned. Yeah, the losers weren't always the Lib Dems. I want to say, support the policy and echoing councillor Otten as well, thanking the fact that there's been a lot of work going in with officers across the council, various departments and across the parties here. And the reason I want to speak is just to reflect on actually how much progress this council's made in looking at gambling and other licensing issues in a much more joined-up way than when I started on the council back in 2016. It's recognising that in the case of gambling, gambling causes harms, it affects people. And in this council now, we're developing much more of a mindset that, what's the phrase? People at the heart of what we do. And I think it is really important to reflect that this is about, the whole point about the council's licensing gambling premises is to balance the need to protect the people who elect us and we stand up for, as against the interests of the gambling industry, which has its own interest, which is, in short, like any profit-making company, it's to make as much money as possible out of its business. Just reflecting, a few years ago, this council really actively promoted gambling. It was a time when we're actively considering one of these super casinos promoted by the government at the time. Our policy said we recognise gambling as an important part of our economy, and I'm just glad to say, we're not saying things like that anymore. We are recognising the harms that gambling causes, and I hope this plays out well in the relatively few applications that come to the committee. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Norris.
Oh, I just felt I had to say that Woodhouse has two very dedicated and effective councillors, and we're very, very pleased to be representing our ward. And I also welcome the chance to regulate gambling more efficiently and effectively for the protection of local people.
Councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to thank the committee for the work they've done on this, and particularly I want to thank the officers, because it's been a really kind of intense piece of work, you know, from the licensing team and the public health team. And I think whilst, you know, this is a really, really good progress compared to what we've had in the city in the past, we seek to protect our residents from the harm caused by gambling. You know, we have to operate for the licensing policy, we need to operate within the legislation that we have at the moment. So I am really looking forward to changes at national level, because gambling does cause harm. I'm very proud that I was at the launch of the Northern Gambling Services that opened in Sheffield a few months ago, and that just tells you how the harm that gambling can have on, can do to individuals and families. And it was particularly harrowing, actually, to hear two mothers talk about the suicide of their very young sons on the occasion. So whilst I am super proud that we can have this in Sheffield, I think we need to tackle the system that allows the gambling industry to exploit people. And, you know, gambling is as addictive as a class eight drugs, and we have to keep that in mind within this policy, that that's what we need to think when we are licensing premises in certain areas. So thank you to everybody involved, but let's not forget their gambling harms.
Thank you, councillor Argenzio. Councillor Diamond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think many people, indeed, most people here, will know or know of people and families whose lives have been blighted by gambling. People who may have spent their savings, got into debt, lost their homes, suffered family breakdown, or in the worst cases, lost somebody to suicide. While this policy is very welcome, and I commend all the work that has gone into this, what is really needed is for the government to undo the damage done by the previous Labour government. As we should all be aware, it was a former Sheffield MP, Richard Kayborn, to whom the council recently gave freedom of the city, who deregulated the gambling sector. While this deregulation has enriched a few wealthy people and businesses and brought money into the exchequer, the toll on communities, families and individuals is impossible to quantify. That's why I was horrified to see the Speaker of the House of Commons, Sir Lindsay Hoyle, opening Bethfred's new headquarters.
Councillor Diamond, you're well aware that you're not supposed to name people. You can say Speaker of the House, you can say, you know, you must not name people. That was discussed at the WHIPS meeting. Yeah, that was discussed at the WHIPS meeting. I've just been advised. That was discussed at the WHIPS meeting. Can I have agreement that it was discussed at the WHIPS meeting? Okay, so if we carry on, please do not name individuals. Thank you.
I was horrified to see the Speaker of the House of Commons opening Bethfred's new headquarters a few days ago. In this matter, as in so many others, the Labour government must urgently act in the interests of the people, not their donors or corporate interests, and re-regulate the gambling sector to end the exploitation and impoverishment of vulnerable people for the enrichment of the few.
Thank you. I have no more speakers. Councillor Otten, would you like a right to respond? No. I'll go to the vote. Is the motion agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. Okay. So that motion is passed, that motion is carried. Thank you. Item number eight, notice of motion regarding a fair deal for social care reform providers. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. May I call on councillor Sophie Thornton to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. When we think of social care providers, we think of the residential care homes that look after our grandparents, the community care staff that help our loved ones stay safe and well at home, the voluntary sector services that provide support for people from mental health to dementia care, or the supported living services that enable people with a learning disability and/or autism to gain their independence. Now, let's be clear, these services are our front line. They enable that specialist support for our elderly, people to stay in the places that they've called home, raise their families in for as long as possible. They allow people to learn to get around on public transport, to join in activities, make new skills and make new friends, and people to gain independence, reducing their reliance on their family carers who will not be around forever. Yet it is this government's political choice to burden our frontline social care services with £900 million of national insurance contributions next year, which is £300 million more than what has been allocated to local governments to support social care. So the Labour Party here can hail the money that they've given to local government, but they have given with one hand and taken away with the other. We all know how much these services are under strain, how important they are, and I'd like to think that we all agree that the small social care providers who budgeted for maybe 5% thinking that that would be enough, should not be the people scratching their heads trying to square a circle of this government's creation. It's not fair, it's not just, and if we do not support social care by calling to exempt them from this, then, and we know, our frontline services will fall. That cannot happen. Social care is crying out, we all need to listen. I'd hope that Labour are learning from the recent Woodhouse by-election what happens when they fail to listen. Reject their poor delete-all amendment, back our motion, let's get a fair deal for social care. Thank you.
Thank you. May I call on councillor Rob Rice to second the motion? Councillor Eris, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And before we start the timer, I would like to say, be one of the first to welcome the new member for Woodhouse, my good friend councillor Willis Marshall. We did it, lads. And I am sure that he'll carry on the good work of Paul Wood in listening and delivering for the people of Woodhouse, and to being the community champion that that area so desperately needs. I'm sure that he will work to bring communities together in what makes them great than working to divide them. I come from a family of healthcare professionals. Both my parents worked in the NHS and my sister and brother-in-law currently do. There is a reason why I studied engineering rather than health. I regularly have chats with my dad about the state of the NHS and about social care. And whilst he is thankful for the work that Labour is doing in fixing the NHS, he has less good things to say about the attitude being taken to both the front door and the back door of the healthcare system, that being primary care and social care. Labour are saying that they are wanting to fix a foundation, but the foundation of our healthcare system are these primary and social care sector. And the rise in employers' national insurance is undermining the very foundations that Labour are claiming that they want to fix. We all know from just conversations with our neighbours, our constituents, our friends in Sheffield, that getting a GP's appointment in this city is increasingly difficult. And as councillors, we all know how stretched a social care system is and the subsequent impact that it is having on these council finances. I'm not an economist, but you can, I can take a good guess that adding extra financial burden on these organisations to provide these services are not going to improve them. The British Medical Association has called this hike a significant blow to the sector that could see practices go under, and the RCGP stated that this will be the straw that breaks a camel's back. Both have asked for the sector to be exempt for the, or get additional funding to be provided to cover these costs, but as of yet, no confirmation has been given. The Northfield Trust had said the same about the social care system. They state that the charge will cost the social care system an extra £900 million a year, a cost that is not going to be absorbed but be directly passed on to local authorities like this. So to ensure that every part of our healthcare system is supported, I am, I'm winding it up, don't worry, is supported and to prevent the burden from being passed on to our struggling local authorities, I second this motion and its resolution.
There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers one and two on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting.
Thank you.
May I call on councillor Laura McLean to move amendment number one? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In proposing this amendment, I would like to start by noting why we find ourselves here today discussing the state of the country's finances and the impact of this on social care in our city. In July this year, our new government inherited a £22 billion black hole caused by 14 long years of austerity and cuts fuelled both by a failure to invest in our economy and spiralling inflation. The recent budget had a strong and much-needed focus on fixing public services, but the problems facing our country and social care cannot be fixed in a single budget or by funding alone. Social care does not need a sticking plaster but deep and long-lasting reform to ensure no one in our city lives in fear of ill health or old age. We need a social care system that works with our NHS to keep people healthy, out of hospital and living full lives. The Secretary of State for Health and Social Care has said that there will be a plan for social care reform to go alongside fixing our NHS, recognising that the NHS cannot be fixed without reforming social care. He has also said that he will work with care users, workers and other political parties to create consensus for this reform. We cannot play political football with social care. Here in Sheffield, I really welcome the way our cross-party Adult Health and Social Care Committee and Education, Children and Families Committee work together to support and ensure the viability of the care sector in our city. Our adult social care strategy here in Sheffield envisages a city where people can live the life they want to live and are able to receive the care when they need it, care that prioritises independence and choice. Moving forward, members across this chamber must continue to work together in pursuit of this vision. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McLean. May I call on councillor Matthew Dwyer to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. At the end of 2023, the number of people waiting for hospital treatment in England stood at 7.7 million, 14% of the population. This is a national disgrace and has devastating impact on people's lives here in Sheffield. This was caused by 14 years of short-term thinking. In 2010, the government slashed the capital spending in public services. It's why hospitals and schools in this region are crumbling and social care is in a worse position. That's why the Labour government is investing over £22 billion in day-to-day spending to get waiting lists down, but also over £3 billion in capital spending to build back those foundations, and we're supporting councils with £600 million extra funding to go to help the social care sector. As councillor McLean has stated, there are no quick fixes to social care, and it needs whole-scale reform. The government will deliver this by implementing sector-wide collective bargaining through the Adult Social Care negotiating body, which is in the Employment Rights Bill, to improve pay conditions, training and professional progression, improving the lives of those that deliver and receive care. This is transformational change that will improve the lives of everyone in Sheffield, and it's a first step towards a national care service, mirroring the national care service. I call on all parties to support this approach and work in a collaborative way to achieve this aim.
Thank you, councillor Dwyer. May I call on councillor Angela Argenzio to move amendment number two? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and welcome, councillor Marshall. I hope this is not too much of a madhouse for you. So I welcome this motion from my colleagues in the Lib Dems, and we are going to support it. We will not, however, support the Labour amendment in principle because it's a delete-all. I thought we'd moved away from that, but it seems to have crept back in. So although we agree with some bits in the Labour amendment, we will not support it at all. You know, I accept, you know, the sentiment in the, in the motion. However, I think we need to go further. The risk on local authority by providers... The risk on local authority by providers going bust is huge. I have been contacted by several providers, and actually I'm now invited to the providers' meeting that happens every month because obviously council offices are supporting them fully with the worry of the extra burden that the new national insurance regime will bring on to them. But so that for me is really, really worrying because as a local authority, we will have to pick up the pieces. If a home needs to close or a service provider, you know, a home service provider needs to close, we still have to provide services for those people. But I would go further because it's not just about the care sector, it's also the community and voluntary sector are being really affected by this and small and medium businesses of any kind that will have to pick up the bills to pay their employees. On the other hand, if we were taxing the super rich rather than taxing working people or people who own small businesses, this wouldn't happen. And so I would like you to support our amendment. Thank you.
May I call on councillor Turpin to second the amendment? Thank you.
In refusing to tax wealth, the Labour government has chosen to continue the Tory government policy of putting the burden of austerity on those who can least afford it. And it's not just in the care sector, it will be targeting small businesses in Sheffield and across the UK while leaving their wealthy donors alone. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Turpin. We now move to debate on the matter. Canthera Rusmilsen.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to echo the points already made by councillors McLean and Dwyer, but particularly I want to emphasise that we are where we are today because of decisions made by Conservative-led governments since 2010, and we really cannot deny that. Demand for social care has been rising and is set to continue to rise for some time, and that's partly due to an aging population which has more complex health and care needs. But also, we cannot ignore the fact that welfare reforms during the 2010s did push more people into the socio-economic conditions that lead to higher dependency on social care, and now we are all bearing the burden of those political choices. All of us are bearing the burden for that. So the National Bill for Providing Good Social Care has risen and will continue to rise, and whole-scale reform is ultimately the thing that will fix the fundamental issues. There cannot be a member here who believes that can be done in the blink of an eye or even in one parliamentary term. The new government has repeatedly made it clear that health and care reforms are central to its mission to improve the health of the nation and that health and care are inextricably linked and must undergo reform together. That work has already started. Social care is no longer being ignored or sidelined by central government. It's vitally important that we continue to work constructively together, as councillor McLean said, across our political groupings. I've been a part of the Adult Health and Social Care Committee since its inception, and I really value the ethos that's been fostered in that committee by members and officers, which rises above political differences to focus intently on the task of providing the best possible care in a timely way to people in Sheffield who need it. Finally, Lord Mayor, I would like to extend a particular thanks once again to our extremely dedicated officers who do so much to ensure that Sheffield people who experience care services have a real say in how they work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Milsen. Councillor Eris, you've got up to two minutes.
The adult social care funding system in England is not fit for purpose and needs urgent and lasting reform. The current system is confusing, unfair and unsustainable. There is consensus on the need for reform. Seems an age, doesn't it, since the Dillnot Commission made those conclusions as it was envisaged with the passage of the CARE Act in 2014? But here we are, we have a catalogue of crises in social care. I think it's safe to say all councillors in this chamber know what those challenges are. We've mentioned them countless times before. But significantly, of course, funding for social care. With an additional £6.9 million worth of pressures following the Orton Statement, the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee is facing an eye-watering £85.9 million total forecasted budget gap by 2028/29 before mitigations. The impact of implementing the minimum wage of employer national insurance contributions on independent care providers draw councillors' attention. To read this report from Care England, where it talks about the survey that the Care Provider Alliance published only a few weeks ago, where 95% of providers are deeply concerned about the budget's impacts on their viability. 73% will need to refuse to accept new packages of care from local authorities of the NHS. 64%, 64% will need to let staff go. 86% will not be increasing wages of other staff, thereby reducing salary differentials.
Thank you, councillor Eris, your time is up.
And 22% plan to close their businesses entirely.
Thank you very much.
With a general election now behind us, now is the time to take a bold approach before these issues, before it's too late. Thank you.
You were down on my love. Can I please ask you to keep within your time limit? I mean, it's not difficult, is it? You were great, councillor Turpin. Staff. Yeah, absolutely. Councillor Malinson, would you like to speak on the debate? That's fine, because I have no more speakers, so yeah. Please try and keep to time, then.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I will be brief. I just wanted to come back on councillor Milsen's speech. You can't heap blame on the Tory government for the decision to raise taxes on small businesses and organisations when that was being done by the Labour government. We need to tax the disparate wealth, not make people pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more speakers. If you want to indicate, otherwise I shall go to Sophie for a right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Thornton, sorry.
Councillor McLean and councillor Dwyer, we talk about the inherited black hole when the political choice in front of Labour's government right now has been to burden social care providers with this. If they cannot meet the national insurance contribution increases, they will need to look at cutting staff or cutting services. That's not political football, that's reality. And what is political football is deleting our entire motion and replacing it with blame and self-congratulation echoed by councillor Milsen in this chamber. That is what political football is. Now, we really welcome the support of our Green colleagues in taxing the super rich and overtaxing social care and small businesses. That would be the right thing to do. And councillor Argenzio, you're right to highlight the really important work of our voluntary sector. Councillor Turpin and councillor Malinson have said it well, that it is a game of political choices here and they're making the wrong ones. Now, I do agree, councillor Milsen, we do have an exemplary working relationship on adult health and social care. I think that all committees should heed it. But I think I also agree that this is about political choices on this issue and we have to speak up. And unfortunately, the political choice by the Labour government seems to be the wrong one. Councillor Eris has demonstrated so clearly the financial challenges social care faces. The situation is dire, we need to act. Back our motion, let's get a fair deal for social care. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thornton. I am now going to move to the vote on the amendment number one, moved by councillor Laura McLean, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Dissent? I gathered that, actually. Yeah. Okay, we'll go to the vote.
I press that.
Yep.
And that should give me red.
Right, and then I do the same.
Yep, we do the same. Press that.
Red.
Red. Yep. Never remember again, so yeah. Sorry? Oh, sorry.
Okay, we have a result, okay? The amendment is lost, 29 for, 40 against, and one abstention. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number two. Do we have dissent? Dissent, okay. Shall we go straight to the vote?
Lord Mayor, in voting for, we are against part one.
Councillor Milsen? That's fine, okay, we'll go to the vote, please. We run the vote. Okay. We have a result. The amendment is passed, that's 38 for, 29 against, three abstentions. I'm now going to move to a vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. Councillor Milsen.
Lord Mayor, in abstaining on the substantive motion, we are voting against paragraphs H to O in the original lettering, and we'll also be voting against any parts of the Green amendment that are now in the substantive motion.
Thank you. Any more for any more? Okay, I shall run the vote. If we could run the vote, please? Okay. The substantive motion has been passed, 44 for, 30 against, just for clarification, on amendment number two, it was carried in part, part two was lost, part one was lost, just for the record. Thank you. We'll now move on to item, yeah, don't. Well done. We now move on to item number nine, notice of motion regarding Protect Our Rivers. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. May I call on councillor David Barker to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes. Councillor Barker.
Lord Mayor, before proposing this motion, could I, through you, put a technical amendment to the motion to the council? And if you're happy for me to put that, that would be to amend paragraph L to read, request that the Transport, Regeneration and Climate and Communities Parks and Leisure Policies Committees add river quality and restoration to their work programme. And I'd like to request that technical amendment, please.
Thank you, councillor Barker. Do we have a second for that? Councillor Milsen? Councillor, agree that? No. Okay, we'll need to go to a vote. Are we going to go to electronic vote on that? Run the electronic vote on that then, please.
Lord Mayor, can I just have some clarification on what we're voting on? Thank you.
Councillor Barker, would you like to repeat what you've just said? Thank you.
Yeah, Carrie, we're just wanting to amend paragraph L, and the amendment is to add the Countryside Parks and Countryside Committee as well as the other committee, so we refer it to two committees rather than one. Yeah.
Okay, councillor Parks, okay. Can we run to the vote on that just till we make sure the amendment's since? Thank you. I'm going to call this, we have got support for that. If we could now move on to the debate, councillor Barker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and it really is a great pleasure to propose this motion because a lot of people in this chamber won't realise the love that I do actually have for the outdoors and for our rivers and waterways. And indeed, this very afternoon, on numerous occasions, I've been longing for the great outdoors. But that love of the outdoors came from my upbringing in Woodhouse, a place many of you are now familiar with. And you're probably scratching your heads thinking, rivers, canals, great outdoors, Woodhouse. So I'll qualify that. For my generation, kids of my age, to ensure that we did something meaningful but kept us out of trouble, we were forced, and I mean forced, to do the three S's: Sunday School and scouting. And I tell you what, we didn't do those willfully. However, looking back, apart from the uniform, but looking back, I'm so pleased that I was literally forced into scouting because that gave me the love of the outdoors and our rivers and waterways that I keep with me today. Because we were a troupe in Woodhouse, but we didn't sit about it, oh, tiny notes, we were very good at that. We were out doing it, and we didn't have a lot, but what we did have were a load of canoes, nobody asked where they came from. So we would be out most weeks, we didn't have your posh rather valleys and that in those days, this was on the rivers, on the canals. But we could go out, safe in the knowledge that you could do an Eskimo roll, or in my case, just simply capsize, and know that for two weeks afterwards, you wouldn't be taking antibiotics or even worse. And, you know, when we went camping, we didn't go on these paid camps, these posh camps, I actually had to pay for those, we were tents in the wood. And our source of water on those camping trips, well, it was your local river or your local, or the stream. And as our leader, Mr Shepherd, would tell us, as long as the water's running fast and you're less than 50 yards away from an animal carcass upstream, it'll be fine. And he owned an Abadasha, so, you know, he knew what he was talking about, you know, so we trusted it. But, so what you could say from that, and I apologise for this in advance, that I got a lot of my teenage kicks from our rivers and waterways. But now, if you're brave enough to go under the boardwalk, then I'm afraid what you're going to find is raw sewage and effluents coming from those rivers. And I apologise for those really bad Virgil Sharkey puns because this debate deserves better than that, and our rivers and waterways deserve far better than the 14 years of neglect that they've had under the last Tory government. It really is heartbreaking to see the state that these have got into. And we've got something here that's on all our doorsteps, that's free for everybody to use, that's got such potential benefits for physical health, for mental health, for wildlife, for plant life, for the environment in general, which now, many of which cause a hazard rather than a benefit, and that is simply shameful.
Councillor Barker, as much as I really love hearing you speak.
I'll sit down.
Yeah. May I call on councillor Mark Whitaker to second the motion? It is your maiden speech, and as I have been very lenient with everybody so far. Councillor Whitaker?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. We have heard the appalling statistics and seen the film evidence on our televisions and from all the wonderful environmental activists working on this. Politicians, local and national, should also be leading on this. This motion is a step in doing that. But along with this, we need a change of attitude, deeper change. Should private companies profit through pollution? Of course not. But over the last few years, under the last government, they were profiting from pollution in an exponential manner. Regulation was weak. Last year, there was a 55% increase in the total numbers of hours in which sewage was discharged into Sheffield's waterways. That is 18,000 hours' worth of sewage spilled. Thank goodness we are now getting a tightening up of the regulations governing these practices. The largest citizen scientist water testing project was organised by the Anglers Trust. It found 83% of English rivers had high levels of pollution. Important though fishing is for mental wellbeing, this obviously affects far more than just them. We have heard that our and other cities are doing their best to encourage active travel. Many of the walking and cycle routes follow river and canal systems. Investment is being made to expand them and join them up. If the pollution is not corrected, people will be walking and cycling beside open sewers. It is self-evident that this would not be conducive to either health or mental wellbeing. But it shouldn't have come to this. People in charge of our water supplies should be people whose primary interest is the health of both our citizens and our rivers, not people whose only interest is to extract wealth. The chiefs of the water companies take millions in bonuses that are based on the profits they made for shareholders, not bonuses based on how effectively the system works. The bonus system is wrong, the water industry as we know it is wrong. But I must speak to the motion. This motion stands to improve things. I urge you all to back it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Whitaker. I could hear people calling out, it was his maiden speech, so I allowed him to go over like I've allowed every single person in here on their maiden go over. If I could now, there are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers three and four on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Joe Otten to move amendment number three? He may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations, councillor, on your excellent maiden speech. I would say I very much agree with it. I only wish that the MPs from your party who voted with the Conservatives on saying that the regulators should take into account the profit, economic growth, I think was the phrase they used, rather than apply the rules as they're meant to be applied. I hope that your speech reflects a change of heart in your party, because, you know, a regulatory system has to be clear and it has to be efficiently enforced. And we don't want to be vague and weak about it, the way that that vote seemed to imply. Look, I welcome the spirit which speeches are made, I think they're excellent speeches. I undertake open water swimming, you might have guessed, as do thousands upon thousands of people in Sheffield. Many took this up during Covid, it was a way of keeping them sane as much as anything else. And we need the waterways to be clean, to be safe for us to do that. It's not just the swimmers, it's not just swimmers. You know, children paddling, sailing little boats, sailing little ducks in Encliffe Park, taking your dogs out, dogs are going to get in the water, aren't they? Let's face it. We need the water to be safe. And so I just, I ask council to support our amendment to strengthen the spirit of this motion. There are lots of ideas. If you want to do something really effective, take a look at the Liberal Democrat manifesto. Take a look at the public benefit company as a model for the water companies, so that the public interests can be served and not just the profits of the shareholders. So take a look at that, and I recommend this amendment to the council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Otten. And I'm really liking the leopard print. I do like a bit of leopard print myself. May I call on councillor Barbara Masters to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations to councillor Whitaker on your maiden speech. We welcome Labour accepting that the health of our rivers matters hugely. Regrettably, their motion shows they still fail to understand the need for a radical reform of the way the water industry is regulated. This Labour group does as it's told by London. Our local Labour MPs toe the party's line by voting with the last Tory government for off what to weigh the effects of fines against economic growth. The Labour government is gambling on economic growth, which has so far failed to underpin with its budget. Little wonder, Labour's motion fails to call on its government to tackle the root of the problem, the regulatory framework itself. Unless we have an authority which can regulate the financial and the environmental performance of water companies, putting river health at its heart and give its powers and funding, our rivers, lakes and coastlines will continue to degrade. This purports to be a motion to protect our rivers, something that the Sheffield Waterway Strategy Group has been fighting for here in Sheffield. They need more than a pat on the back for their tireless efforts to bring our rivers and streams back to life. They need a government that empowers a regulatory body to ensure we will enjoy clean, safe and unpolluted waterways. And such groups need a seat at the table, a place on the board of water companies to hold them accountable. If this motion is to be anything more than a propaganda piece for the Labour government, we shouldn't just be calling for a commitment from Yorkshire Water to reduce sewage charges. It's already done that. We want the government to put in place an authority with the power to enforce Yorkshire Water to do that. And if Labour members really want the local groups who have fought to protect our waterways to continue to have this vital role, then the matter should be referred to the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committees, which has already started work on an integrated blue and green space strategy for Sheffield. So I recall on all members to support our amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I call on councillor Marianne Elliott to move amendment number four. You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congrats to councillor Whitaker on your maiden speech. We're all connected. According to the excellent Connected by Water partnership, every corner of South Yorkshire is linked by our water. Our relationship with our rivers and waterways is complex, though. We all know about the benefits to health, wellbeing, active travel and nature. But as we have more extreme weather due to climate change, they can also put our homes and businesses and lives at risk. Just yesterday, I was talking to a river ranger about the Sheaf River Wall on Saxon Road, which has collapsed due to the infrastructure not being able to cope with the force of the water. And the amazing Antiques Emporium business is hugely affected, sadly, an example of our intricate relationship with water, which is particularly relevant in Sheffield, obviously built on the confluence of five rivers. And we wouldn't be the steel city without them, a key part of our industrial history. But who looks after our rivers and waterways? Our amendment specifically mentions the Shevenport River Trust, the Upper Don Trail Trust and the River Stewardship Company, because we really want to thank them for what they do. I'm a volunteer river ranger, and I must admit, I don't get a lot of time to do ranging. But sometimes when I get the opportunity, I do like to spend a Saturday morning in waders, pulling random stuff out of the river sheaf or porter, which is actually really satisfying and a great way for communities to come together because of our shared connection with water. So it's the Rivers Trust and the River Stewardship Company that organise sessions like that. It's all done and paid for by those organisations. So I just want to say massive thanks to them and all the work they do. Could say a lot more about pollution, but I'm conscious of time and the failed experiment of privatisation. I'm sure my colleague will touch on that. So finally, on CPL committee, as councillor Masters mentioned, we recently decided that the green and blue strategy...
Thank you.
We'll go ahead, thank you.
Councillor Brian Holmshaw, could you please second the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And congratulations councillor Whitaker on your maiden speech. Good to see you. This is not just about sewage, but it's also about the chemical pollution from wastewater, from the discharges there, from transport, from streets, from agriculture, mining and landfill sites. And we reference this in our amendment. Chemicals are discharged into rivers and streams through domestic and industrial wastewater, containing things like cleaning chemicals, plastics, personal care products, pharmaceuticals, as well as pesticides and veterinary medicine. Now, as a result, we are facing a biodiversity crisis, with the quality of freshwater ecosystems declining more rapidly than either marine or terrestrial systems. Two thirds of existing species are in decline in our waterways. And it's a litany of past failure that unless it is directly addressed, is going to continue into the future. There are massive issues, for example, with landfill sites, which were capped off at the top, but not sealed at the bottom, and now leaking into our watercourses. Research by Now Then magazine in November this year, using the watershed website and mapping tool, reveals a number of large disused landfill sites in the Parkwood Springs area that could be affecting the nearby River Don. So therefore, Now Then also revealed, and no surprise here, that people living in areas of Sheffield with higher levels of deprivation are also more likely to be living near a disused or active landfill. The watershed map for Sheffield also suggests that areas with a high risk of flooding, which is made worse by underinvestment in the water industry. Water companies are also responsible for deprivation in the areas. And cleaning up our rivers is not just about sewage, but it's about inequality too. Thank you.
We will now move to debate on the matter. I have a number of speakers who have indicated. Councillor Ridgler?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to my colleague Mark Whitaker for his excellent maiden speech. Lord Mayor, Sheffield was born out of its rivers and they've always been the lifeblood of our city. A medieval castle was built where the rivers Don and Sheaf converge, and our ancestors mastered their crafts of forging, smelting and grinding, thanks to the power of the water which flows down our seven hills. We owe so much to our rivers, and yet they have been over time willfully abused and neglected. Under the previous Conservative governments, our rivers were pumped full of waste and sewage, whilst obscene profits were being made by the water companies. In my ward of stocks between Upper Don, our previous Tory MP repeatedly voted to allow water companies to continue dumping raw sewage into rivers and the sea. But things are changing under a Labour government. And I applaud the stringent measures which are being brought in to ensure that environmental standards will be met and to penalise those who do not comply. A few days ago, I visited the site of the former Sheffield Castle and saw the impressive work which is being done to deculvert the river sheaf, create an improved environment in our regenerated city centre, improving biodiversity and habitats. And this is thanks to this council's commitment to creating a healthier urban environment, together with the excellent work of the Shevenporta Rivers Trust and other voluntary organisations who have worked so hard to protect and promote our blue heritage. Labour government's commitment to our waterways is to be thoroughly commended, as is this motion. And I look forward to a cleaner, healthier and protected river sheaf, which will make the regenerated Castle Gate a place where our city's heritage in all its forms can be celebrated and enjoyed by all. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. May I call on councillor Rice to speak? You have up to two minutes.
And I'll try and keep it within two minutes unlike my last speech. And I'd like firstly to congratulate councillor Whitaker on his maiden. It was a brilliant speech. Now, I am a fellow wild swimmer too, like councillor Otten. Unfortunately, you won't be seeing me, my usual getup, I think. Be improper for me to rock up in swimming shorts and a travel towel. But I do want to speak of the value of our green and blue spaces to this city and to in particular its residents. The mental health of this city and of the country is deeply connected with our access to nature. I often find myself, when things aren't going right, going out for a swim, getting a bit cold and wet, and then by the end of it, I think, you know what, things could be worse, I could be having to stay in the water. And this is why we need to be looking at nationally the way that we deal with our waterways. We're very thankful in Sheffield that, because we're at the top of a hill and water flows down thanks to gravity, that the impact on sewage is limited to further down. But friends and family of mine who live in North Norfolk aren't quite so lucky. So this is not just about Sheffield, this is about countrywide. But the deeper problem is how do we deal with the corporate aspects of this? This is why I really want to be putting effort into reforming these companies into public benefit companies. Now, whether it be about the sewage or about the gas floods which Stanington experienced only a few years ago, we need to think about how these companies make money and where they put this money. Had these companies not been sending dividends to their shareholders, but rather reinvesting it into their infrastructure, not only would we have beautifully clean water, but we would not have had residents of Stanington go without heat or power. And this is why I am proud to speak to this amendment, this Lib Dem amendment, so that we can get accountable water companies that work for people rather than the shareholders. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rice. Could I call on councillor Gilbert? You have up to two minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations councillor Whitaker. There is a long history of transformations of human-water relationships. I ask you to imagine a time before Sheffield. Hunter, fisher, gatherers had mutual relationships with water. Agency and intention was not limited to humans. Rivers were someone, kin, family. Sheffield started as just a field by the sheaf. We settled agriculture and we came to control nature and the hierarchy. Over the centuries, the agency and personhood of nature diminished. Through the scientific revolution and colonialism, nature became countable. Through neoclassical economics, everything and anything became subject to exchange for money. Modern water today is controlled, it is political, an economic good that can be commodified. England and Wales are the only countries in the world to have a fully privatised water and sewage disposal system. Part of the reason for the current precarious situation of our rivers is the result of this long history of thingification, of transforming our rivers from kin to thing. In March 2023, Lewes District Council passed a motion to recognise the legal rights of the river Ouse, making it the first river in England to be granted legal status. We can do this for our five rivers, the Don, Sheaf, Rivlin, Loxley and Porter. It is time for us to refresh our relationship with rivers as kin. Be it by community movements that achieve bathing status for rivers, by recognising legal personhood of rivers or by public ownership.
Thank you councillor Gilbert. Councillor Milson, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm not quite sure how to approach this, but I think there's a lot of business in a council meeting and it's very easy to overlook something. But I think that the green and Liberal Democrat groups may have overlooked a discussion that took place earlier today in which we queried the validity of sending a work programme consideration to the Communities Parks and Leisure Committee only when it relates to water and rivers. And that's why we put forward our technical amendment put forward by councillor Barker to include the CPL committee in our paragraph L. to include the CPL committee in our paragraph L, so that Transport, Regeneration, Climate and Community Parks and Leisure Committees would jointly consider this work. This is because the responsibility for flood management, planning considerations and the local plan and heritage considerations all sit with the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee and cannot be taken by another committee. So we would be excluding all that work from this vital request on the council to look after our rivers properly. We cannot take it away from Transport, Regeneration and Climate, so that's why we propose both. So I don't know if there's been some forgetfulness, and perhaps people might want to speak to that and propose a matching amendment to their own motions. And just before I sit down, massive shout out to the River Rangers, thank you councillor Elliott, and Citizen Science needs a lot more of our support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Milson. Our last speaker will be councillor Johnson. Thank you councillor Douglas Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations to councillor Whitaker. Nice to see you. I just want to speak briefly to the issue about riparian rights and duties. So it's specifically about paragraph 3p of our amendment. We don't normally get a chance to speak about riparian stuff in the council. In short, it's about how we as a landowner, and the city council is a large landowner in the city, relates to the water running through our city. So riparian rights are things that traditionally allowed you to fish in a river flowing past your fields, but of course also allows you to use the water for things like water-source heat pumps. And the riparian duties are basically to keep the river flowing more or less than the place it should be, to keep it clear of blockages and things. It's actually a very real issue, because when it does come to flood risk, as well as biodiversity and a good, healthy nature by the rivers, it actually is important to maintain those. They don't just happen by themselves. And it's something that's often neglected. And what's positive about the increasing citizen engagement and organisational engagement in the rivers in the city is that there is more and more interest in making the most of those riverbanks. Yeah, we've got lots of good ones. So recognising, so point three notes that actually the council is a big landowner, it owns lots of land next to the rivers, it does have those rights and duties. I spoke before saying, when I declared an interest, I said, of course, I'm the council's director on the River Steership Company, set up primarily for this purpose. And so this is really just noting that actually as a council, without landowning hat on, we do have a duty to contribute towards the work that goes on in that field. Of course, for procurement reasons, it doesn't need to be the River Steership Company, but that is the whole reason that this council set up that organisation all those years ago. So I'm just raising this now to ensure that it is addressed as we go on. Thank you.
You councillor Johnson. May I offer a right of reply to the move, the motion councillor David Barker, you may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Gladly accept that. And thank you everyone for your contributions today. I'll first of all turn to the Lib Dems and Joe pointed me towards the Lib Dem manifesto, but as far as I can see, the Lib Dems' main policy on rivers and waterways is if you find one, you throw Ed Davey in it and take a picture of it. So, yeah, thank you for your contribution, but no thank you. And now, this is where I think I'm starting to go soft, because I actually start to think that there's some merit in a number of things that colleagues in the Green Party have said, and I'm not going to go on at length about that, because I don't want to, but I will say, I was particularly impressed by the fact that you gave a lot of credit to organisations and individuals that are doing some wonderful work on this, and I think it's right that we do that, and so I support you on that. But, you know, as I see it through the debate, we all agree there's a serious issue here. We all agree that it needs addressing, and I would suggest that we agree the Labour motion as tabled is the best way to do that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Barker. I'm now going to move to the vote on the amendment. Councillor Otten.
Lord Mayor, councillor Milson was quite correct. I did omit to withdraw item six of our amendment, which has now been dealt with by the technical amendment made earlier, so I'll have to withdraw that at this point if that's acceptable.
Yes, yeah. Do we have agreement? Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thank you councillor Otten. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number three, moved by councillor Joe Otten, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Dissent?
In voting against amendment three, we will vote for F and abstain on part two M, but I think that might have just been...
Okay, shall we move to the vote? Can we move to the vote, please? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, there was some other discussion going on. So this is on the Lib Dem amendment, isn't it? So in voting for, we are against part four P. Thank you.
Apologies for that. Thank you. This was carried in part, paragraph P in part four was lost. Now going to move to the vote on amendment number four, carried by, moved by councillor Marian Elliott, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Councillor Milson.
Lord Mayor, thank you. Amendment four, we will be voting for this amendment, but against parts four to seven.
Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for this amendment, we'll be abstaining on five and voting against seven.
Amendment four is carried in parts, part five and seven was lost. We're now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. I will take silence as affirmation. Councillor Milson.
Just about keeping up with you. Substantive motion, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, we're voting for the motion obviously, but abstaining or voting against any parts of amendments three and four that passed according to our previous votes, I think that's the simplest way of putting it.
Okay, everybody else okay if we move to the vote? The motion is carried, seventy to one abstention. Yeah, okay, let's go to the vote then, please. If we could now move on to item number ten, which is a notice of motion regarding supporting new employment rights for Sheffield workers. There is a maximum time limit of twenty-five minutes for this item. May I call on councillor Fran Belbin to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes. Thank you councillor Belbin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations councillor Whitaker on a great maiden speech. Under fourteen years of Tory government, we did see the rolling back of a lot of trade union rights, and we saw the increase in precarious work for many in our city and across the country. We also saw that we've got some unscrupulous employers out there who are making really quite enormous profits at the expense of some of the workers in our economy who are then on minimum wage. Sadly, some of those are in our social care sector actually, where we know some of our children's social care employers are making profits of twenty-seven percent, which is a real outrage in our public services. So I'm really, really pleased as someone who's a longstanding trade unionist, and been a trade union officer for more than twenty years, to be backing this motion in support of the Labour government's new employment rights. There's some really fantastic stuff in this new legislation, and I think we should be really welcome this in our city and across the country. Amongst the things that I think that are in the bill is a load of new positive things around flexible working in particular. All of us here will know as councillors how hard it is sometimes to balance work around our families, around our caring responsibilities, around managing our own health and wellbeing. So having flexible working as a norm is really important for everybody who is in employment, and I'm sure people here will recognise that. The bill really, this bill really demonstrates the high value actually that the government is putting on decent, secure work that pays a fair wage and that also contributes to making our economy grow. Ensuring that flexible working is the norm actually helps to boost productivity as well and helps to boost our economy as well. I also want to mention zero hours contracts in particular. There are estimated to be over a million people on zero hours contracts in the UK at the moment. If you're on a zero hours contract, you don't know if you can pay your bills each week, you might be turning up to work only to be told that your shift no longer exists, you simply cannot manage on a week-to-week basis. By introducing legislation to ensure that zero hours contracts can only exist where regular hours are not being, are not on offer, that actually improves the security of many, many workers in our, in our economy. And I think it's important to note that people will still have the option to work zero hours if that is what they prefer, which I think makes redundant some of the proposals inside the Lib Dem amendment to create a whole new category of worker. There are many other provisions in this bill that I don't have time to go into, but I will just finish by saying thank you to our own trade unions here in the council for the partnership work we do with them.
May I call on councillor Karen McGowan to second the motion? You have up to two minutes. Councillor McGowan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor Whitaker on his maiden speech. Well done. I'm pleased to be able to second this motion today. The Employment Rights Bill represents the biggest upgrade in employment rights for a generation. I fully support the measures this bill will bring in modernising trade union laws, which will help unions in their vital role representing workers' interests and improving working conditions. This includes introducing rights for trade unions to access workplaces and repeal restrictive legislation. The bill will help raise living standards across the country and provide better support for those businesses who are engaged in good practices. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the trade union conveners for their work at Sheffield City Council, and also those representing employees across the city and country, they do an amazing job. I have had personal experience of what a difference being in a union can make when an employee is unfairly dismissed. This happened to a family member of mine a few years ago. This didn't only affect them, which was soul destroying and affected their confidence, but brought stress to the whole family. It sank to the trade union, the representative who supported them all the way through to tribunal, that fortunately for my family member, they won the case. It demonstrated to me that there are unscrupulous employers out there and that trade unions are necessary to represent, help protect and fight for workers' rights. For me to show that even now we need new landmark employment rights bill that will help further protect workers in Sheffield. It will make work pay for banning, by banning exploitative zero-hour contracts. There are thousands of workers in Sheffield that are currently employed on a zero-hour contract, and this will be a big help in many of, to many of them. It will also upgrade workers' rights and provide protection against unfair dismissal from day one. It will give Sheffield workers the prosperity, security and dignity they deserve. There are just, these are just a few of the benefits this new employment rights bill will bring to benefit the workers in Sheffield. I'm happy to support this motion and take this opportunity to encourage people to join a trade union. We are all stronger together. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
There are two proposed amendments, and these are five and six on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Curtis Crossland to move amendment number five? You may speak for up to two minutes. Councillor Crossland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Following the general election result, it is quite interesting to see the number of motions that we're hearing of Labour patting themselves on the back instead of listening to the very people who elected them. But however saying that, I must admit that there is quite a lot of good in this, in this motion, and some of it I might even vote for. But it doesn't take a rocket scientist to realise that this has been emailed over from their London bosses in an attempt to deflect from the shambles of the budget. They're giving employment rights with one hand, but taking financial freedom with the other. Research by the Joseph Rowntree Foundation has found that families are set to be seven hundred and seventy pounds worse off thanks to the Labour government's budget. In fact, they said that living standards are set to return to the depth experienced during the cost of living crisis by the end of this parliament, with those on the lowest incomes faring worst. And yet again, we see an attack on zero hours contracts in this budget. We all want to stop exploitative work of all contract types, but some people want zero hours contracts, so let's make zero hours contracts work fairly for people, not villainise them for a quick soundbite. With the Labour government making people poorer, while Labour councillors bury their head in the sand, it's no wonder voters are flocking away from them. And I'll take this opportunity now to welcome councillor Marshall to the chamber. So we've heard a lot about the financial black hole that the government have inherited, but what about the black hole that Labour are leaving in people's pockets? Let's stand up for the hardworking people of this city. Patting yourself on the back while ignoring the real problems people face simply won't do. I move this amendment.
Thank you councillor Crossland. May I call on councillor Simon Clement-Jones to second the amendment? You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If I can congratulate councillor Whitaker on an excellent maiden speech, and also I can't pass up the opportunity also to congratulate councillor Marshall, our newest councillor from Woodhouse. I, like councillor Crossland, don't have a problem with most of this amendment, nor particularly the Green amendment. So I think there's much to agree on here. But I know that the Lib Dems would like to go a bit further, and I don't know, including issues such as kinship caring, carers, and the very important work that they do, making some sort of recognition of that, very important. I also support making zero hours contracts that are a little bit more expensive. You know, it's making it more convenient, if you like, for employers. Why shouldn't they have to... With the Labour Government making people poorer while Labour councillors bury their head in the sand, it's no wonder voters are flocking away from them. And I'll take this opportunity now to welcome councillor Marshall to the chamber. So we've heard a lot about the financial black hole that the government have inherited, but what about the black hole that Labour are leaving in people's pockets? Let's stand up for the hard-working people of this city. Patting yourself on the back while ignoring the real problems people face simply won't do. I move this amendment.
Thank you, councillor Crossland. May I call on councillor Simon Clement-Jones to second the amendment? You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If I can congratulate councillor Whitaker on an excellent maiden speech, and also I can't pass up the opportunity also to congratulate councillor Marshall, our newest councillor from Woodhouse. I, like councillor Crossland, don't have a problem with most of this amendment, nor particularly the Green Amendment. So I think there's much to agree on here. I know that the Lib Dems would like to go a bit further, and I don't know, including issues such as kinship carers and the very important work that they do, making some sort of recognition of that. Very important. I also support making zero-hours contracts that are a little bit more expensive. You know, it's making it more convenient, if you like, for employers. Why shouldn't they have to pay for that privilege or make the jobs themselves that bit more secure and permanent if that is what people who are employed want? I too would welcome the work that trade unions do with the Sheffield City Council. I had the distinct pleasure of chairing the regular meeting with, one of the regular meetings, with trade unionists and Eugene Walker, where they used to regularly try and kick lumps out of each other, including with councillor Pastchek, who was obviously not a councillor then, but also was part of the important work that the trade unions do in this place. So, as I say, you know, I think the only real issue for me is should Sheffield taxpayers be paying for it? I'm sure it should be. Trade unionists dues to pay for that. Let's find out really if this facility time is given good value for money.
Thank you, councillor Clement-Jones. Can I please remind council not to name ex-officers or ex-people? I know it was done in a nice way, but it was agreed. Thank you. And councillor Crossland wanted me to congratulate councillor Whitaker because he forgot such gentleman. Yeah, thank you. May I call on councillor Toby Mallinson to move amendment number six? You may speak for up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Welcome to councillor Marshall. Congratulations to councillor Whitaker. Just coming back on the point about the zero-hours contracts. I myself worked eight years as a supply teacher. I was working through agencies. I was in control of the work I did. When I went to work, I would get paid. If I didn't, I wouldn't. But I was not beholden to a zero-hours contract where I was forced to not work and not get paid for a period of time. That is unacceptable. Zero-hours contracts are an abhorrent contract. There are plenty of alternatives which provide the flexibility, so we should oppose them at every turn. Coming to our amendment, our amendment strengthens the motions by addressing the impact of the recent national insurance increases on small businesses and organisations and the way that will affect employment of people before they can even access the benefits of the motion. I was getting my lunch in Winter Gardens earlier today and visited the ME and Fibromyalgia Group stall there, which is fascinating, fantastic work that they do. They told me that the rise of national insurance would have a big impact on them, and that would be reflected across so many other small businesses and organisations. It will also increase the cost of the council for the services they provide, and it will directly impact employment, as I said earlier. This council needs to call on the government to think again on this misguided tax increase, instead taxing those who can afford more. Additionally, Sheffield council is a lead employer in the city. It should lead on innovations that could improve efficiency and staff wellbeing, such as researching a possible move to four-day-per-week employment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mallinson. May I call on councillor Henry Nottage to second the amendment? Have up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to welcome councillor Marshall to the chamber and congratulate councillor Whitaker on her wonderful maiden speech. I'm a big supporter of improving workers' rights in Sheffield and welcome most of the stuff that's in the Employment Rights Bill. However, since 2008, we've had a problem in the UK with stagnating wages and rising costs of living, and the national minimum wage has been the most powerful tool to stop people falling below the breadline at the bottom, but it's not come without significant problems. The Labour Government is right to strengthen workers' rights and protect the rights of the lowest-paid and the most vulnerable jobs. However, they're really missing a trick by not addressing systematic unfairness in our tax system whereby the fruits of your capital ownership are taxed far, far less than the fruits of your hard labour. By creating a fairer tax system that treated the fruits of both of these equally, we would be able to do so much more to protect our workers, not just at the lowest end of the economy, but right across the entire country. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Nottage. We now move to the debate on the matter. I have a couple of speakers. Councillor Fox, you are the first speaker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, can I welcome councillor Marshall and congratulate councillor Whitaker on their speeches? I stand on my feet today for two reasons, really. One is to take a deep breath at what I've listened from the Lib Dems. I mean, congratulating our trade unions when in every year, in every budget, they want to cancel and cut their time accordingly. I think that's a bit deep, and we need to give credit where credit's due. Lord Mayor, from the first day I started in Pittman, I was sixteen, we fought for workers' rights. I became a trade unionist within weeks when one sees of what the strife and struggle of most people within our city went through, in our communities go through. How can it be right, Lord Mayor, that in the 21st century, we're still fighting for sick pay for people who give Labour eight hours a day and being time off through their work? How can it be right that we are still fighting for holidays, for statutory holidays, for people, for workers' rights? This government might not have done everything I would want them to do in the first five months, but they've took a massive step on this, and I think credit is due where credit is due. And for the government to come out and settle the railways dispute that had been going on, and anybody who'd ever tried to travel up and down this country, Lord Mayor, would know how that had impacted people's lives. Lord Mayor, it is about time that workers got a chance to shout. Great people like Bill Ronsley and Ray Jackson in this city, Ken Curran, Bell Emmingham, people stood up and fought in this city. I were proud to know them then and still proud to stand at the side of them and fight for workers' rights. This is a short step, but it's a long way to go, but I am proud that this Labour Government has took the first steps. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Perfectly timed as well. Thank you. Councillor Diamond, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and welcome to councillor Marshall, and congratulations to councillor Whitaker on his maiden speech. Just a very brief comment on this motion. I think while this and the other motions on this agenda are important and worthy topics, I would like to point out that they merely make commentary on national policy without having any local actions. I do think council motions should always include local actions, so please, colleagues and perhaps democratic services bear this in mind in future.
Thank you. Councillor Mary Lee.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to refer to the meetings that Simon Clement-Jones referred to a while back. I used to attend many, many of those meetings when I was a cabinet member for a number of years alongside officers and the trade unionists, and there were many, many, many things that were discussed in those meetings that helped the smooth running of the council. It wasn't just about pay and conditions, it was about health and safety, it was about workplace changes, it was about equalities, it was about all the things that the council were doing, that the senior officers shared with the trade union conveners and stewards and with a politician there. And I know your party, I don't know how you happen to be there, Simon, but your party refused to go to those meetings when you were in power some years ago, that you were a stranger to those trade union members. And because for those three years that you were in power, you were an absolute stranger to those trade unions. The council, to be successful, the council needs to work with its workforce, and it cannot meet with everyone individually. It has to have people who represent the workforce, who can then convey what the council is doing to their members and ensure that everybody works smoothly for the success of this council and the success of this city. Trade union conveners and stewards are extremely important in doing this for the council and for the workforce in the city to make sure that everything runs as smoothly as it possibly can. So we do need to work with trade unions, absolutely, and I cannot understand why you all are so anti-trade unions and the existence of union stewards and conveners, because you say it every time, you bring it up at every budget council and at every opportunity that you can.
Thank you. I've just had one more speaker indicate, this will be the final speaker in the debate, councillor Gelsmith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Let's put the record straight. The Liberal Democrats believe in trade unions. I've been a member of a trade union all my life, and I think I still do pay towards it. However, my union reps are paid by the union. That is what we disagree with. If every steelworks had union reps, the unions paid their wages to be union reps, and that's what we think should happen here. Where does all the money go from the people who are in that union? It goes to the trade union. And they should be the ones that pay the trade unions' wages, not Sheffield City Council, isn't it? Don't you think that it's a bit too close if we're paying their wages, the relationship? So my point is that the Liberal Democrats absolutely believe in trade unions, but we feel that the unions should pay their wages.
We've now reached the guillotine. The right of reply is going to councillor Belbin.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm really not sure you understand how trade unions work, councillor Smith. This is basic stuff. Every employer I've ever worked for, as a trade unionist, with facility time, it's the employer that provides that facility time because they recognise it is an investment in good industrial relations, in partnership working, in order to achieve the best for the staff and the employers of the organisation. I'm not sure the Lib Dems really understand their own position on zero-hours contracts either, because they sounded entirely contradictory, the two contributions made on it, and I don't think the councillor actually listened to what I said about the choice of, about people being able to have a choice over whether to have a zero-hours contract as well. So I'll take those two points with a pinch of salt, I think, because you don't seem very clear on how they work. I've mentioned to councillor Mallinson that under the new regime, under national insurance, Labour have taken over eight hundred thousand small businesses and charities out of paying national insurance contributions altogether due to the way that they have managed that. So I think you are exaggerating the impact on small businesses. And I want to also point out that because partnership working is the way things, we do things in this council, we don't impose decisions on our unions via council motions, is why we will be opposing as well the part of the Green motion that says we should be discussing four-day weeks. We expect that to come through partnership with our unions and not through council motions. I'll finish just by supporting councillor Fox, who I'm sure everybody will be aware is not in direct contact with Labour HQ, but has still spoken out very positively about what a great piece of legislation this is and how from day one we will be bringing in employment rights that should be standard for every worker and every employee in this council and other regions.
I apologise for not stopping councillor Belbin. It was a procedural matter I was talking about there. It's fine. We will now go to move to the vote. I'm now going to move on the vote of amendment number five, moved by councillor Curtis Crossland, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Thank you.
Lord Mayor? Voting in part. So in voting against, we are voting for parts one and three.
Councillor Hurst.
Thank you. We're voting in part. In voting for, we are voting against two, three, four and six.
Okay, we will now run the vote. Okay. Right. Amendment number five is lost in parts. Parts one, three, one and three will be carried. We will now move to the vote on amendment number six, which is moved by councillor Toby Mallinson, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Councillor Mills.
Lord Mayor, thank you. Amendment number, sorry, six. Amendment six, we're voting against this amendment but abstaining on part one J.
Councillor Otten.
Thank you. In voting for, we're abstaining on one J and four and against three.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move to the vote.
So I'm not sure how Sheffield council works, but I'm sure it's the same as most of the others.
So did Labour vote for on four?
Yeah.
Because they said they were just against one J.
Amendment number six is carried in part. Part three will be lost. We're now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. Councillor Mills.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. With the substantive, we'll be voting for the motion but against any parts of amendment five that passed and against or abstain as appropriate on any parts of amendment six that passed according to our previous votes.
Thank you. Councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Voting in part. In voting for, we're voting against any parts of motion five that we voted against before and carried. I think there was one subsection.
Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we're voting as we did on the amendments, on any text amendments, and we will abstain on the original clause H.
Councillor Phipps, have you got anything?
No.
That's great. We will move to the vote on the substantive. The substantive is carried. You'll be very pleased to know we've reached the guillotine. Okay. But we need to go through the rest of the agenda. So item number eleven, notice of motion regarding bringing back our buses. Councillor Councillor Sangar.
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ian Horner.
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
There are two proposed amendments and these are numbers seven and eight on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. Councillor Miskel to move formally.
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Campbell-Pew.
Second.
Formerly seconded.
May I call on Alexi? To move amendment number two.
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
Number eight, sorry, not number two, I do apologise. Yeah. Councillor Gilbert. You're seconding this amendment. Yeah. Everybody is getting tired. I know, yeah. We're now going to move to the vote on the amendment number seven, which was moved by councillor Ben Miskel, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. It is pantomime season, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, councillor Phipps. Just dissent, that's fine. Anybody got anything to add to the dissent? Or is our script run dry? Okay, we will now move to the vote then. One more to vote. Right, okay. The amendment number seven is lost. It's 28 for, 41 against and one abstention. I'm now going to move on to the amendment number eight, which was cut on by councillor Diamond, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support. Do we have unanimous support? We have dissent. Councillor Mills.
Thank you. Amendment eight, we're voting against but abstaining on part one F and voting for part one G and for part three P to S.
Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we are abstaining on three L and six and against three M and three T.
Councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting against, we're voting for two, three and four.
Okay, let's run the vote. Right, I said can, I'm just trying to read this through, this is not easy. Amendment number eight is carried in part with paragraphs L, M and T of part three and part six being lost. And Paul says, believe me. M and T. L, M and T. M. It says mother. Of part three and part six being lost. We're now going to move on to the vote for the substantive motion. I will take silence. Thought it was Christmas. Councillor Mills.
Thank you. The substantive motion, we're voting against but voting for part A and voting against or abstaining on the parts of amendment eight that passed according to our previous voting.
Councillor Otten, councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. For the twelfth round here, we're voting in part and in voting for, we're voting in... Put my teeth back into gear, I'm sorry. We're voting against any parts of amendment eight that carried.
Councillor Phipps, did you want?
No.
Okay. Can we run to the vote then, please? Thank you.
The vote will just count.
The substantive motion has been carried, 41 for, 27 against and one abstention. Item number 12, allocation of seats on council committees 2024 to 2025 update. This item of business is to approve a new politically proportionate scheme of seat allocation on the council's committees following a change to the composition of the council resulting from the by-election held in the Woodhouse Ward on the 28th of November. A report of the Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement outlining the legal requirements to allocate seats on council committees to political groups on a politically proportionate basis was circulated to members of the council and published on the council website on Monday. A few paper copies are available in the council chamber. A motion to approve a new politically proportionate scheme of seat allocations on the council's committees for the remainder of the municipal year 2425 and to approve changes to the membership of certain committees so to reflect the new seat allocations has been circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Otten to move the motion formally? Councillor Otten.
Thank you. Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
May I call on councillor Diane Hurst to second the motion formally?
Formerly seconded, Lord Mayor.
Is the motion agreed? Yeah.
I just wanted to say something briefly, if that's okay. Congratulations to all, because obviously this is how it's come about. And while we appreciate that this is proportional in an overall sense, we do kind of disagree with the resulting balance on communities' parks and leisure being 441. I understand how like that's been okayed by officers and I'm not disputing any work they've done. But politically, that doesn't really reflect the overall makeup of our council at 36, 28, 14, 51. Labour, Lib Dems, Green, Sheffield community councils and obviously our independent. So for that reason, we can't support this motion.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure it was okay. I mean, obviously you've had discussions before council meeting. But we will move to the vote. Okay, thank you. Who's not voted? Okay, thank you. Motion item 12 has been carried, 57 for, 11 against and one abstention. Item number 13, memberships of council bodies representative to serve on other bodies and related issues. It is moved by councillor Mary Lee, seconded by councillor Joe Otten, that approval be given to the changes in the membership of committees and other council bodies at the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at the meeting. And with the following addition and changes. Councillor Rob Bannister to replace councillor Mark Russellings on the governance committee. Councillor Lee.
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Otten.
Formerly seconded, Lord Mayor, and welcome to my new deputy.
Item number 14. I'm sorry.
I stepped down myself.
I'm so sorry, there's so much talking. I just want you to know, when we sat here, all I can hear is noise from everywhere.
There was a called-out remark, Lord Mayor, from the other side of the chamber that isn't founded and I thought it might be a good idea to set the record straight.
Thank you, thank you. No. We now need to go to vote on the motion. Is the motion agreed? The motion is carried. So we're now on item 14. Item number 14, minutes of the previous council meeting. It is proposed that the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the council held on the 6th of November 2024 be approved as a true and accurate record. Is that motion formally moved? Councillor Lee.
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
Is that motion formally seconded? Councillor Otten.
Formerly, Lord Mayor.
The motion is carried. This concludes the business of today's meeting. However, I know we want to pay our respects to our colleagues that have sadly passed away. But before we do that, I would just like to wish you all a very, very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'd like to pay a special tribute to all those people who will be working over the Christmas break to keep us safe and that will look after us. So have a very, very lovely Christmas. But I think we now want to move on to tributes. Yeah. Councillor.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, but just a point in that we will have council staff working over Christmas and they'll be working to help the people.
That's what I said, people that were keeping us safe and looking after us. But yeah, you're absolutely right to pay tribute to the council staff because it may be a shutdown, but it's not a shutdown. And I know that all councillors will be working as well because I know that I've done it on a Christmas Day many, many times. Yeah. So shall we move to tributes? Now the formal part is... Okay. Councillor Sangar.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Clearly, one of my roles as longest-serving member is to stand up on these occasions. So just to pay my respects to councillor Jim Bamford, who I always thought of as a young councillor and somebody very passionate in terms of public transport and particularly buses. We were just at that time a decade into deregulation and he fought regularly against bus fare increases and route cuts and I know he was a very hard-working councillor for Walkley. I think my big memory of Jim was on Housing Committee where he had brought, and this is a reference really to the debate we had last month, where he'd brought two of his children under the age of five to the committee and I'd brought my twins, who at the time were about 11 months old. So we had four small children screaming and making noises through Housing Committee. So some things haven't changed. So as I say, it really came as a shock to me to think that Jim had passed. But just to talk about Graham, who was Graham Oxley, who was Lord Mayor 2009 to 10 and served this city, really enjoyed that role. And I always thought of, whereas I always thought of Jim as a young councillor, I always thought of Graham as an older councillor. And that was because I was a little older than Willis when I first met Graham, where I was a difficult student arguing policy points about the fact that Sheffield needed to complete its inner ring road. And at the time, Graham was running his tool company and his tool company was one of those companies that had to make way for Derek Dooly Way. And he found that quite difficult because, you know, he'd inherited it from his dad and all the rest of it. But, you know, he was a link back to Sheffield's manufacturing heritage, not past because it's still going on and it's got a great future. But Graham liked, you know, Graham ran a tool company. And Graham was a long-standing liberal. As I say, he served this city as Lord Mayor. He was a councillor for Chapel, first Chapel Green and then for East Eaclesfield. And he served on Exfield Parish Council. But the other point I would make, Lord Mayor, about Graham is he is that link to the liberal past because clearly this council chamber didn't have liberal representation from the National Government of the 30s, through councillor Francis Butler's victory in 68. And Graham was one of those people in the 60s and the 70s who stayed loyal to the Liberal Party and then came on the council, but he'd worked for the party and campaigned for the party for 15 to 20 years before coming on to this council. So really want to thank all the work that both councillor Jim Bamford did on behalf of the Labour Party and the Labour Group, but also councillor Graham Oxley on behalf of our group and our predecessor party. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Sangar. Councillor Parek.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I didn't know Jim as a councillor because I think he served when I was very, very young. But I first met Jim a couple of years ago when he was involved in the Better Buses campaign. I think I learned quite a bit afterwards that he was a councillor. I remember being quite surprised by that revelation because I think Jim approaches, he approached me and he approaches everyone in a very kind and open way. And I feel like it's not the way you often get treated by other councillors, not to insult any of you. But, you know, he's an incredibly open, was an incredibly open, generous person, was very wise, incredibly knowledgeable at transport, about buses, trains, rail, and very much treated you as though, well, he knew a lot and he wanted to share that. And, you know, he had lots of great gifts. It was really touching to be at his funeral the other day and just to hear the range of people he touched, the range of ways. I think I really should have planned what I want to say beforehand. I think, you know, I've worked closely with Jim, both in terms of Better Buses campaigning and also when I worked for Olivia Blake. We met often where he would talk about the changes he wanted to see from the Mayor of Mindorffty. He was a fallen inside of lots of people, including, you know, the Mayor of Mindorffty in a wonderful way because he knew lots of ways this city could be better and would work tirelessly for that. He didn't stop sharing his expertise when he stopped being a councillor. He didn't stop sharing his expertise when he stood down from Transport for the North. I think there are incredible number of ways that our city and country are enriched by his work on transportation. But I think, yeah, I feel much, much richer as well having worked with and experienced Jim's warmth and kindness for the few short years I did get to. So I'm really satisfied he's gone.
Thank you, councillor Parek.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Graham, aged 88, passed away last Friday in hospital after an illness. He's survived by his wife, who Graham has cared for for many years. She's got a longstanding illness and he's cared for her, even when he was Lord Mayor, I believe, and right through that period. Graham stood, as Andrew said, in the north. Graham stood, as Andrew said, in the north, in Chapel Green and then East Echolsfield. He was a hardworking, sort of a quiet councillor who engaged with the public and the community. As has been said, he was Lord Mayor in 2009, 2010. A lot of work for many years, even before he was on the city council, was in Echolsfield Parish Council. And he was chair of the parish council in 92, 93, 98 and 99, and 2014 and 15. He was a member well before that and he retired from the parish council in 2019. His business was Oxley Tools in Mills Sands, just down the road in Sheffield Free. And he became famous because of the incident in the 2007 floods, when Mills Sands was an island. His pecture was an island and he couldn't get off. He was airlifted from the factory by helicopter. That was the only way he could get out. Graham's sort of personal interests was a Sheffield United supporter. And for many years, over the last probably 10, 15, 20 years, he's been a member of the senior blades who meet once a month and have a lunch and entertainment. And Graham was a solid member of that group. He was also in the area for many years, chair of the Friends of Echolsfield Park. And he had a lot to do with the Chapel Town Baths, which was owned by the Echolsfield Parish Council, and the movement away when that bath was closed and sold to the new Thorncliff Leisure complex. And that was a lot to do with both the city council and the parish council. But thank you for giving this opportunity to speak about Graham. Rest in peace, Graham. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I didn't know Graham Oxley, but I do pass my condolences to his family and thank him for his public service to the city. I wanted to speak about Jim Bamford. Jim was the first person I ever campaigned for, first knocked on doors for, back in 2006, when he was the candidate for Labour in Walkley, when he was trying to win back that seat that he previously represented. And we stayed in touch in the nearly 20 years or so since then. And I'd echo what councillor Parek has said, that Jim was extremely kind, generous with his time for, you know, people like myself who were just starting out, and extremely wise, particularly in the area of public transport and frankly, anything to do with transport. Jim was an expert. And he came to see me not long after I became leader last year. And we had about 45 minutes in the diary. And he came in with, no word of lie, probably about 150 slides that he was going to take me through for what we needed to do, and pursued up to about 80, where I said, let's send me to pack and I will come back to you. But he was dogged in his persistence that we needed to do everything on each one of those slides. And he was probably right. But whether it was expanding our trams, bringing our rail under public control, or bringing our buses under public control, I know Jim would be very pleased with some of the things that are happening right now. The last time I think I saw him was on the day when the tram came back under public ownership in March, where he was there along with members of the Better Buses campaign at Cathedral tram stop, celebrating that really significant milestone. And it's quite fitting that probably the second person in the city who knows as much about public transport is Jim's son, who has very much inherited this love of all things to do with how we move around. So, you know, I think many people in the city are deeply saddened by the loss of Jim before his time. And, you know, I think we all want to send condolences to his family and thank him for the massive contribution he's made to this council and to this city.
Does anybody else wish to say a few words? I shall just say a few. I didn't know Graham, but as Lord Mayor, you soon learn that every step you take is in the footsteps of a previous Lord Mayor. And some of them can be as far back as 20, 30, 40 years. So I had heard his name mentioned since I'd become Lord Mayor. And it is nice actually to hear a story, to put that to the face that we see in the gallery. So please pass on my condolences. And Jim, Jim was campaigning, Jim. Do you know, there's nothing you didn't know about transport. And I think what has been lovely today is to hear about former councillors that when they do decide it's their time to stand down, they still play such an active role. And it, you know, and what that knowledge they've got, they take outside and keep that burning bright. So I think their families will take a lot of comfort that we've had these nice little comments about them. Anyway, on that note, again, a very Merry Christmas. But just to let you know, thank you so much. We raised £165 and three pence. £195, yeah. Gosh, £195. And that's without you all going online with our Just Giving page. So that is absolutely so generous. And I know that the Art Project will be there on Christmas Day. So again, you know, homelessness doesn't stop in people with complex issues. But don't forget, you are allowed to enjoy yourself as well. So have a great time, everyone, and see you next year, if not before.